Good morning, everyone. It is nine o'clock on Tuesday, August 10th, and so I will call the meeting to order for the Committee of the Whole. Our C A O and deputy clerk is going to be our clerk today, Tamara Willby. If you could please do our roll call. Thank you.
Certainly. Counselor Clerk?
I'm present.
Counselor Donaldson?
Present.
Counselor McKechnie?
Present.
Counselor Smith?
Present.
Counselor Wood Roberts?
Present.
And Mayor Roberts.
Present. Okay, so, thank you. So the first item is to adopt the agenda for today. So do I have a mover secondor for that? And Counselor Clerk and Counselor McKechnie? It resolved that the agenda for the Committee of the Whole meeting held on August 10th, 2021 be approved as presented. All in favor? Okay, that carries. Is there any disclosure of pecuniary interest or general nature thereof? Okay, seeing none. We have adoption of our minutes. The last Committee of the Whole meeting was in June. That was June 8th. Do I have a mover secondor for those minutes? Counselor Smith and Counselor Wood Roberts. You resolved that the June 8th, 2021 Committee of the Whole minutes be approved as circulated. All in favor? That carries. So we'll move into our first report, which is from our Fire Chief, Mike Isles. So we'll be bringing him in. Or should I say? Wait till I see him? Not just wait one second till he comes into the meeting?
Good morning.
Good morning. There's our Fire Chief, Mr. Isles, or should I say Papa or Grandpa? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll let you take your report away.
Typical straightforward report. Calls are similar to last year. A few more inspections, but that's just the ebb and flow, so that's not really out of whack. And very noteworthy that we have completed another county recruit course. So that program has been very successful and continues to be successful. So it's a very good initiative that we've undertaken as a county.
So do you want to maybe just explain that in a little more detail when you see a county? So that was the different departments working together for training?
So the recruit program, so any new hires are obligated or required to take the firefighter one and two training. So it's a basis of firefighting, basically. We do it as a county class, so every, all the four fire departments are taking it. All their new staff or new hires enroll, and we rotate through the various spots in the municipality and use the entire county staff or the four municipal departments do the training and do the teaching. So it's truly a very successful support of the four departments. Works very well and continues to work well.
That's great. That's good to hear. So his report, Mike's report is there? Are there any questions to Mike? No? I take it the sort of little bump in fire complaints, we had a fire ban on during June. Seems so long ago because July was so wet, but was that some of the complaints due to the fire ban?
Yep, exactly. With fire ban, we always tend to get complaints and that's why there's a bump there, and that's why they're up for that one.
Okay, thank you. So mover in a second or two. Receive the report, please. Counselor Clerk and Counselor Smith. You resolved that the Committee of the Whole acknowledges receipt of the Fire Department report for June 2021. All in favor? Okay, that carries. Thanks so much, Mike.
Thank you.
So next, we'll move into Public Works. We have lots in our Public Works department, so we will bring in our Director of Public Works and also John Watson. Just wait. Okay. And Jeff, pardon me, I didn't say, lots of people from Public Works. Morning, Jeff. Morning, John. Rob's just coming in the meeting now. So the first item, morning, the first item is a request for a no exit sign in Halliburton Lake that the department received. And who's speaking to that?
I can speak to that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
So this is a request that came in for the end of Halliburton Lake Road, which is where it meets Percy Lake Road. And this request is strictly in accordance with Policy Number Six, which states that council has a discretion to approve warning signage. So any request like this has to come through council or committee.
Any further comment with their request? I mean, I've driven that road many, many times. You know, when you drive on cottage roads, you do sort of need to maybe plan a little bit and know where you're going and just, I can't, all over Dicer, we have dead ends and no exit signs. I'd like to hear from council. I think a bit fine for whatever you say, too many signs. Can't say that word. Counselor Smith?
Yeah, thank you. My reaction was, I think, similar to yours. Almost every one of our roads, a no exit vote. And back, if you travel north from West Guilford, once you reach Marygold, we should put a no exit sign according to this theory because the only way back out is the way you came in. And we should have signs on every one of our roads. That doesn't make any sense. And I didn't see anything unique about this situation that made it different than most other roads. So I think receiving the letter is fine. Thank you.
Okay. Rob, go ahead.
Oh yeah, just to follow up on that, we do have some of these signs in our network, in our inventory. Not a lot, probably a couple dozen. Of those, I'm assuming some of those are either signed from the provincial highway. So it actually would have been the province putting the sign up, and it becomes part of our inventory. So I just wanted council to be aware that we do have some signs in our network, but not a lot.
Okay, thank you for that. I do notice in the letter that they talk about a cottage renter and also delivery vehicles. So I think probably what's happened is the cottage rental industry is busier than ever. Like every single cottage is booked every single week. And also more and more people are having home deliveries, so more vehicles. But as I said, I mean, I think you have too many signs. I don't think that that's going to actually stop people not knowing where they're going. So unless there's support for this, I will just ask for a motion to receive. So motion to receive. Counselor Smith, that was your motion, I believe. Okay, and Counselor Smith, and then seconded by Counselor Donaldson. You resolved that the Committee of the Whole acknowledges receipt of the request to install a no exit sign on Halliburton Lake Road at the Percy Lake Road intersection. All in favor? Okay, that's carried. We can contact the, it says name redacted, but you'll contact those people. The next one is slightly different, though. It's about Hutchings Road, and I believe, Rob, is that going to be you as well?
Yes, this is a new one for me. Looking at the correspondence that was received in 1930, the municipality presumably used tax dollars to put a road through this area. It appears that the municipality and the private property owners knew it was going through private land. And initially, it wasn't an issue until the horse and buggy went bye-bye and the car started using it. So I think, in my opinion, I think we want to bounce this one off our lawyer for legal opinion in that there was public money spent on it. We're going back 90 years, and now because of it being a perceived dangerous curve, they want it straightened out. My concern is the road was put there for a reason. It was for the mutual benefit of the municipality and the landowners because the hill was so steep. If you want to get into a reconstruction, I can tell you, you're probably going to be looking at mid-six figures just to move that small portion of road. If we can even meet the appropriate gradient of the road, which I'm not sure we can. So with council's blessing, I think we go to the lawyer for legal opinion, bounce this one off him, and see what he comes back with.
Okay, Counselor Clerk, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks for that, Rob. Yeah, I've spoken to Mr. Smith on a number of occasions, and as you've explained, and I think it's probably 1930 was before your days. But it went through at that point. There was an undertaking in the 1950s to straighten it out because of cars. And I guess, as he explains in his letter, somehow the Rose Department went down unicorn rather than Hutchings, so it didn't get done. So anyways, comedy of errors. Anyways, the discussions I've had with Mr. Smith is, I think what he's looking at is this is an appropriate would be one of the only pieces on his property where he could section off a chunk for a home to be built for his daughter. And I think that's what the motivation is. So I agree, Rob, that perhaps, you know, getting a bit of a legal opinion would be appropriate. But I think also I think it'd be incumbent on us to determine what kind of work is involved. And as you have pointed out, what kind of dollar figures involved in terms of resolving this particular situation that the township created, if that's, if that's, people are in agreement with that.
Rob, go ahead to respond.
And part of this process would be on our part is to go back through the council minutes of the day and just see, you know, if it was brought through council, what kind of agreement was made, if any? Was there compensation made to the private property owner? There's all kinds of unknowns here. It's not unlike a, another topic we're going to be discussing later is, you know, it's been drawn out, this one over 90 years. Seems to be in 20-year intervals when it kind of comes up. So yeah, there's going to be some background on our part for sure, but the lawyer should be involved.
So Counselor Smith, I did see your hand, but just for guidance, I just want to say we do have a resolution to receive the letter and also to direct staff to return to the next committee meeting with a report detailing any records or past agreements regarding this stretch of Hutchings Road. I think that's a really good first start. Now, it doesn't, I could add to the resolution to see about a legal agreement, but I think starting off with we should just report, we should see what other agreements that we have made or get the history from sort of our side. Tamara, and then Counselor Smith had a question.
I was just going to echo what you said, except to maybe add further direct staff to seek legal advice regarding the stretch of Hutchings Road. Now, Rob, do you think you have enough information you can gather in the files to bring something back preliminarily, or would you like to wait and do the do your review and get legal advice and then come back?
Until I go down to the archives, I really can't answer that.
That's what I was thinking, is to not add that legal advice in right now because it binds him to seek legal advice from council, whereas if at first, just let's get our side, and you're literally going to be looking through, you have to wear your white gloves and look through probably some of our paper records. But I think, and then when he reports back what our findings are from the history on that, then council could further direct him at that time to seek legal advice and costs, et cetera. Is that fair? Counselor Smith is nodding, Tamara?
The only thing I maybe take from that draft resolution is to remove the reference to the next committee meeting because that might be unrealistic.
To a committee meeting? I agree. I wondered about that. Next means it's four weeks from now. Is that fair to just put a committee meeting? This took 90 years, so I don't think it's going to be resolved quickly. There's, and we need to get to the bottom of it. So I will put, return to to a committee. So in this case, unless there's any further questions from other counselors, I do not see any, I'm going to read the resolution and then ask for the mover secondor. You resolved that the Committee of the Whole acknowledges receipt of the letter from Ken Smith of 1240 Hutchings Road detailing concerns with the location of the municipal road and further direct staff to return to a committee meeting with a report detailing any records or past agreements regarding this stretch of Hutchings Road. So on that, do I have a mover secondor? Counselor Smith, and seconded by Counselor McKechnie? All in favor? Okay, and that carries. So we'll consider this step one. If you will. Order here. Okay, let's see what is next. Summer operations summary. I would take it, Jeff, you want to tell us what's happening with the crews?
Hello. It's been a busy summer. The rains we've had is a big havoc on all the roads, the dirt roads and the gravel roads and the hardtop as well, just tons of washouts. It's costing a lot of time and a lot of materials to fix them all. We're slowly getting there. We're starting to work on some of the backroads now that have been left to the end, the low-traffic ones, and we're just filling potholes too that also result from all those rains and stuff. Construction's continuing. We're working on Halliburton Lake Road. We should be finished this week, probably ditching and stuff, and then Miller's already added gravel to it. Miller's is making good time. They're adding gravel to lots of our roads right now, and the surface treatment crew is not far behind, I don't think. We're still, the brusher returned yesterday. He started brushing again, and he should pretty much get wrapped up in probably three weeks. He'll be all done for the year.
Okay, so it's funny how generally we think in, where dollars can throw us off as if there's sort of one big washout or a really heavy year of bad snowstorms in terms of just the overall operations budget. And then the rain came in July. I referenced already that we had a fire ban on because June started out so hot and dry. And then the rain came, and it came, and it comes in, as I said to my husband, a deluge. He said, what's that? And I said, well, it's just when the sky opens up and goes plunk. And I witnessed it myself, being up, spent a week on Kinesis Lake and the cottage road that we were on, the municipal graders were out there, you know, a day or two later. But like you said, it's a lot of extra jogging, jockeying around with equipment because we have such an enormous road network. And so we don't really have a dollar value to see where we're at, but I caution council that I think the operations budget may be a little higher than anticipated, and we'll see that later. But I also want to compliment you. You're doing a great job. I was able to report something up on a road in the Kinesis Lake area, and it was taken care of the next day. So thank you very much for that. Rob?
Yeah, just to piggyback on that, Madam Mayor, it was discussed during the budget deliberations about having a contractor come in and ditch some of our roads. And I just thought it would be fair to advise council, I'm putting you on notice, we will be bringing something forward this year to do just that. The majority of our washouts this year were on roads with no ditches, so the water had nowhere to go, so it took the lane as opposed to the shoulder. So stay tuned for that one.
Thank you. And when the road isn't ditched and on a surface-treated road and it washes away whatever on the side and starts to undermine the road, that surface-treated road, it doesn't matter if it's one year or eight years, it could just fall in. So I've seen little sections of that as I've been out driving around as well. I just, I can't believe how how much damage has been caused this July. I don't think I've ever quite seen it. And sort of not just one bad storm, it's one after the other. So anyway, but thank you to all the roads crew. You guys, if you could please pass that on, what a great job you are doing trying to keep up. It's been a challenge. So anything else to ask Jeff? Counselor Smith, go ahead.
Thank you. And thanks, Rob, and Jeff, for the update. I am curious. You know, there's a lot of orange pylons there, I guess, signals areas you're planning to get back to, but how do you feel about the resources that you have in terms of your ability to respond to damage? The mayor mentioned, she called in one situation. Not everybody has the, you know, the influence of the mayor in terms of calling in to get the road fixed right away. So I know I've had a number of calls and emails from people concerned about, you know, the state of their road. And so I'm curious to hear from Jeff and Rob in terms of how you feel about your ability to respond, and whether you've got sufficient resources or whether more resources are needed.
Some outside contractors help us, already gravel trucks and stuff, and I'm going to get some help with ditching probably later this week, if not first and next week, picking up some of those pylons and stuff you're seeing.
Thank you, Jeff. And actually, I hope I don't have any more influence than anyone else who can report a concern. We have that. I just happened that I did. But there is, right on the front page of our website, is that report a concern. You can go through that. You can call the Roads Department by phone, but an email works just as well. And it's not saying hurry up, get up there and get this done. The patrolling could be done one day on a stretch of road. We have a rain that night, and then there's severe potholes or problems on a road. So anyone can report. We don't tell our staff when to go or what to do, but members of the public, if they see something and they can say, can you please come up and check this area? We will. So Rob, go ahead.
Yeah, and the time of year has a big part in it, too. Right now, we're in the middle of construction season, so we're doing all we can to stay ahead of the contractor to come in and surface these roads. You get those big rains, and you know, we could be down upwards of 50% of labor on any given day because of vacations. So it's, you know, if it was later in the year, yeah, we'd probably have a few more resources. But as Jeff said, we call on the contractors as much as we can, and you know, they come bail us out.
Which is good, which is lucky. Any other, go ahead, Counselor Smith.
Yeah, thank you. And, you know, I certainly appreciate the tremendous efforts that, you know, Jeff and his team put in. But, you know, I know there are calls that don't get returned, and I know that we've approved some additional staffing that we hope will start in September that will you know, improve that responsiveness. But we also, or at least I'm aware of, based on repeated calls, that some people don't get you know, the response in terms of their road repaired as quickly as they'd like or maybe they expect. And so that was the reason for my question, just to emphasize that, at least from my point of view, you know, we shouldn't let, you know, dollars, if you like, stand in the way of keeping the roads up to an acceptable level of repair. And if we need more resources, I'd hope that Jeff and or Rob, you know, step forward and say, we need help here. Simple as that.
Yep, thank you.
I also, it's, you know, Jeff mentioned brushing. I've received a couple of complaints. I've asked these on already, but I'll mention this to council about the the state of West Shore Road in particular. There's a high-traffic road, lots of curves and hills that hasn't been brushed for quite some time, and there are areas of pretty limited visibility. And so if there's any extra capacity from a brushing point of view, that's one that members of the public have reported and expressed concerns to me, and shared those with staff previously. I'm sharing it with council today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Smith. Okay, lots of comments and questions on there, but I do have a motion to receive the summer operations report for information. So I will, Counselor Clerk? And seconded by Counselor McKechnie? You resolved that the Committee of the Whole received the summer operations report for information. All in favor? Okay, Carrie, thank you. And next is the Public Works status update. Excuse me?
Yeah, really, the only change on this would be the updated of the road resurfacing. So these are the completed roads. We still have many more to go through. So I'm hoping in September's meeting, we'll have a much longer list to look at.
Okay, any questions on this report? Counselor Smith?
Thank you. Rob, we've talked about it by voice and email. Nyla Road is on this list. I drove it again yesterday. It still has significant issues. In fact, you know, more than one resident on the road has asked why we did anything, if that's what it is. You were going to have Miller take a look and get their feedback. Have you heard anything?
I have not. The fellow that looked at it is now way up north, so I followed up with the head office. So they're going to come up and look at it as well.
Well, I just, again, share with council concerns of local residents, that road, if you're happy to go up there, I'd encourage you to take a run down it. And $100,000, I recall, roughly the figure, to put a new hardtop on that road, and it's it's a washboard, much of it, after the treatment. So it's it's not, you know, at an acceptable level right now.
So, Rob, maybe you can get back. I too have heard some questions on Nyla Road. Now, I do know that, you know, often with the surface-treated roads, it does take time to pack down, but the washboard won't pack down. That'll, if it wasn't properly prepped, then then the crushed, the stone part won't pack down. It'll always be washboard. So anyway, if we could just find out at a later date if there is any anything that we can do on that road, or if that, or if it will get better in time. So if there's no further questions for Rob, I will ask for someone to receive and acknowledge the report of the Public Works. That's Counselor Clerk. And seconded by Counselor Smith. You resolved that the Committee of the Whole received and acknowledged this report regarding Public Works status updates as information. All in favor? Carrie? The speed radar sign program update.
Yes, again, just as information, Madam Mayor. So there was no June committee, so I included the June numbers here as well. We put the signs back up on Sir Sam's and Wigamog, just to see if the new surface had any influence on the speed, which doesn't look like there was a whole lot of change there. The intersection at Kinesis Lake and Watts Road was monitored basically all of July. Not because it's more important than any other areas, but because we just don't have the staff to move the signs around. So I'm hoping here by the end of this week, or maybe next week, we can get all the signs out. Right now, none of them are out. So our staff are playing catch-up right now.
And the overall theme is that as much as we want to perceive that people might be speeding, they're not. There might be one or two that if someone's out walking in a cargo, but overall, the average speed is either at the speed limit or below. Counselor Smith?
Well, that's a true statement. In terms of the average speed, I'll use Green Lake Road as an example. The average speed there is 43 kilometers per hour. That road is posted at 40. And so, yeah, you can say on average, traffic's just going slightly faster, but the reality is if the average is slightly faster than the posted speed limit, it means a lot of vehicles are going quite a bit faster than the speed limit. Because some people will drive much more slowly. Green Lake Road, some people drive 20 kilometers an hour. But there's a significant issue, you know, on that road with respect to speeding. And you can look at the 85th percentile there at 51 kilometers per hour in the one direction. So those folks that are coming in likely off of the highway 18 and looking at a shortcut, you know, they're not slowing down nearly enough. And so to me, this data does reinforce because the averages are just on the posted speed limit or slightly above, that there because the averages are just on the posted speed limit or slightly above, that there is a speeding problem. And, you know, I think it's terrific that we're we're demonstrating an interest or excitement in trying to find a way to address that through the use of this technology. But, you know, we need some enforcement help to to address what is a serious issue on so many of our roads. And I wondered, Rob, if the the county, when they first deployed this technology, was able to use it to track the degree to what's traffic slowed down. So I guess as people were poking the sign and they say, oh, they're going sixty, it flashes red. And and then people hit brake. And and, you know, at one point, the county was reporting that this technology was slowing the traffic by by somewhere between ten and fifteen kilometers per hour. Do you have the same capability or are you able to utilize the same capability on the on the signs that you deploy?
I'm not sure how they determined that, whether it was through the software, the sign, or I I just don't know if they were using historical data. But it's, you know, I'm I'm of the opinion, and it's only my opinion, that if we have the sign up there, it's going to change the the behavior of the driver anyways. But whether it's working or not, if it's in stealth mode, if they see a great big yellow sign that says your speed on it, people are going to become cognizant of what they're doing. I think the trick is, is you have to measure the speed, you know, almost almost like a phantom where people don't know you're you're watching them. Because that's the only way you're truly going to find out the the behaviors of the drivers. And I'm just not sure how to do that without getting a, you know, they do make a a small traffic counter classifier that you can mount to poles or trees or something like that. But, you know, they're they're a little different than the speed radar signs, but people don't know they're there. So you're going to get the the true impact of it.
Councilor Smith, you referenced enforcement, but I I can't imagine, which means OPP is the ones who enforce. And I can't imagine them looking at these statistics on any of the roads saying you've got a major problem. I I would say the problem is one or two people who will always depend, you know, go, there's always people who speed out there. There's far more speeding on the county roads, especially as you approach town. And County Road One, County Road Twenty-One has, you know, people going twenty-five, thirty kilometers more an hour than the posted limit. Rob?
I, yeah, I agree. I I don't know how much interest you will get from the OPP based on this data, but we do always have the option of paid-duty officers, you know, so we can assign them to an area and let them do their thing.
But anyway, I I great to have the report. That's what we, that's what council requested. And we have those three months in there and we'll continue to get those reports. So I just need to receive. Motion, please. Mover. Counselor McKechnie and seconded by Counselor Wood Roberts. It resulted that the committee of the whole received and acknowledged this report regarding the 2021 Speed Radar Program as information. All in favor? Carrie's. Next, we have assumption of roads as public highways, Plan 404, Bitter and Burdock Lake.
Yeah, so this is a relatively new file. It's only been going on for forty-seven years. We we did some digging on this. And this plan of subdivision first came to council back in nineteen seventy-four, as far as I can tell. What initiated this was a ratepayer, you know, had submitted some correspondence saying we should be maintaining their road year-round as part of the agreement with council from years ago. That appears to be corroborated through the motions in council. The we, in fact, did collect a hundred dollars per property for the areas. And in nineteen seventy-four is when this all started. In nineteen seventy-eight, all of the roads in Plan 404 were assumed. And not sure why, but in nineteen eighty-two of the roads were assumed again. So in my eyes, all the roads were assumed at the same time. We are providing year-round service to Bitter Lake Road. I don't see why we wouldn't be doing that to the roads off of Bitter Lake Road. It seems pretty clear to me the intent of council of the day was to assume those roads into the municipal network. As far as financial implications, we already have a truck in there. They're going right by it anyways. It's going to add a little more plowing. It's going to take a bit more gravel to maintain these roads. The big thing for us is to get survey done to find out exactly where our limit of ownership is and the limit of maintenance. And we may have to do some brushing to get the clearer pathway for the trucks to even turn around. Because in this plan of subdivision, there were no hundred-foot turnarounds at most of the roads. So they just they dead-end into a sixty-six foot. So we got to be really, really certain where the the boundaries are, so we keep the trucks on our property.
Okay, absolutely. So there is a resolution that that was included in the report that is is at the top, the recommendation. And that's, so if there's any questions to Rob, I I think we have to go forward with this. Anyone want to speak to this? Okay, so I will look for mover in a second or then. Counselor Clark, Counselor Wood Roberts. It resulted that the committee of the whole received and acknowledged this report about assumption of roads as identified in Plan 404 as information and that the committee acknowledged bylaws seventy-eight dash forty-nine and bylaw eighty dash forty-seven being bylaws to assume roads in Plan 404 into the municipal road network and that the committee recommend that council authorize staff to notify affected property owners of the change in status of their road as well as the newly adopted level of service. Before I ask for the vote, Tamara, Rob, should I add that what you mentioned there, Rob, the staff are going to have to do some survey work, et cetera? Do we need to add anything to this motion? Mara?
I don't think so, no.
Okay.
Those are just the steps to get to your end results and get there.
Okay, very good. Just double-checking. So then I will call for the vote. All in favor? Okay, that carries. Yeah. And the result of the tender for the rehabilitation of walkways?
Uh, yeah, so this work was tendered out last month. It was the boardwalk from the boat launch down to the high school was included in the budget. The Rotary Park side was a bit of a late add-on. It was all done through funding through the ICIP program. The we had three bids. The budget was about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So even with contingency, we are under budget, which is good news. And so that's going to allow us to do some drainage improvements on Rotary Park as well. I've spoken with the contractor and they're willing to do a bit more work, given that it is later in the year. And hopefully, they can start immediately after Labor Day and the weather holds for them.
As a person who walks around town a lot and sees lots of people using those, I mean, incredible amount of people using those walkways and paths and seniors with walkers and kids learning how to ride a bike, it's going to be really exciting to get those pathways back in shape and some of the heaves and the cracks and they're really, really in rough shape. I just a question on this marquee snow and ice. They're a new company to me. I hadn't heard of them. And yet, on tomorrow's county agenda, they're also the low bid on rail trail. So have they done much work in the area or are they just because of bids and tenders, they're seeing things online and?
No, they've been around for a little while. They're based out of Lindsay. They were formed in about two thousand eight, I believe. And when I spoke with the the fellow yesterday, it's that they're they're trying to do more work up in this area. So they're trying to get their foot in the door, so to speak. And because they are going to be awarded presumably the work from the county is they're already in the area, so it only helped our pricing.
Okay. Good, good, good. Questions on this tender, Councilor Smith?
Thank you. Rob, how much of the of the total is being funded by the grants in the federal government versus our property tax there?
For this project, it's one hundred percent funded through ICIP.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, good question for clarification. Okay, so motion to receive and acknowledge the report. Counselor Wood Roberts, Counselor Clark. It resulted that the committee received and acknowledged this report concerning the results for a request for tender number twenty-twenty-one PW dash thirteen being a tender to rehabilitate various asphalt walkways within the village of Halliburton and that the committee recommends that council award the work as outlined in the tender to Marquis Snow and Ice Limited of Lindsay, Ontario for a cost of a hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars and seventy cents, including non-recoverable HST and twenty-five thousand dollar contingency. All in favor? Okay, that carries. That's great news. Okay, now we're moving into some landfill items. Lots for you, John. So second quarter landfill revenue.
Yeah, so this report is for information purposes only. This is the second quarter, April, May, June landfill revenue, including the revenue from scrap metal. And also included is the information from July, since there was no committee at the whole in July. Revenues basically are on track with what we had anticipated. You'll see the chart has been somewhat revised to accommodate some of the new fee structures we have for different materials and how we're processing them through our square payment terminal system. So some of the comparisons to previous years may not look right, but it is it is all accommodated for properly.
Okay, any questions to John? Should we change the name to landfill now that we're not filling land anymore? We should be, I keep calling it, I, you know, I used, I finally got stopped saying the dump. And then I got saying landfill, and then I said, no, you can't call it the landfill anymore. It's a waste disposal site. Anyway, just a just a little tongue-in-cheek. You can call it whatever you want. We know what it is. Any questions for John? Uh, Councilor Smith?
Uh, thank you. John, I note that the year-to-date, the the construction demolition waste revenue is up from about a hundred and thirty thousand twenty twenty to about a hundred and sixty thousand so far in twenty twenty-one, even though we stopped accepting, you know, complete teardowns. And so does that surprise you? You know, there was a bit of protest taken in the media when we said we were going to stop accepting that back in in May or somebody, I think it was the Home Builder Association, that that expressed some concerns. So, you know, were you surprised at these numbers, particularly as I said, with us facing the acceptance of complete teardowns?
Not particularly. I think just the amount of construction and renovation that's happening, even reflective of the amount of real estate that's being sold within the community over the past few months due to COVID. I think this is kind of what we could expect with the amount of construction that's happening, even just renovating a kitchen or putting on a deck, things or fixing a deck, things like that.
Okay, thank you. Are you able to estimate then the the, you know, our cost of disposing of that waste? Oh, we collected a hundred and sixty thousand, but if it costs us four hundred thousand to get rid of it, not like it's a gain for the taxpayers, I mean.
Yeah, we do have those costs. I'd have to dig into it to be able to present that to committee. But it is obviously information that we are tracking through the budget budgeting process to make sure that we are trying to be as revenue-neutral, if you will, on that kind of expense.
And Rob wants to comment on that. And that's almost, we wait for the full year, I would think, because trucking can happen at different times. I'd like to see a full twelve months, but Rob, go ahead.
And that's exactly what I was going to say, is John Watson, we're speaking earlier, and there is quite a stockpile of of materials at the landfill sites. So it'd be a bit of a skewed number right now anyways. Generally, in November, December, we try and do a big push on it and get it cleared and start at zero again.
Counselor Clark?
Yes, you, Madam Mayor. John, we've we've got two, I think, two different types of of construction waste. You know, the the teardowns where a place is being built. And I would imagine that's being addressed through our building bylaw department where that has to be contracted out, so it doesn't end up in in our recycle centers or or stations. So I take it then like a good part of what is coming in then is is, you know, the end of a small individual who's tearing down a deck or as you described, you're renovating a kitchen or bedroom or or adding additions. So it's there's there's difference in terms of the the two type of clientele. So is that true? Was that was that described?
Yes, there's definitely a lot of individuals bringing in construction waste. There are some contractors, for example, who have renovated a kitchen and they're the company bringing in that C and D material.
Okay, okay, so motion then to acknowledge receipt of this report. Counselor Wood Roberts, Counselor Clark. It resulted that the committee of the whole acknowledged its receipt of the twenty-twenty-one second-quarter landfill revenue summary. All in favor? Carrie. Now, this next item, we may have some more discussion on because I'm sure every counselor still hears from people out there that we do want to be able to dispose of our organic waste and and not just by having our own individual composters or digesters. So, John, take it away, if you will.
Um, I, so this report is demonstrating some of the organics information that we've been gathering in the past quarter. I will say that the quantity of backyard composters and digesters that are being sold in DICEART is quite high. We've already surpassed the numbers from all of twenty twenty. And so I anticipate we're going to be doing some more promotion education around using backyard composters and digesters, creating some videos with our summer student. So we anticipate even more of that usage to increase. One of the big discussions was 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 with Moloch at North America about their in-ground collection bins. Essentially, you dig a deep hole, you put these molocs inside of them, and you could accommodate about eight hundred and fifty kilograms of organics. The sleeve that's inside would then be lifted up at least once a month or it could be more frequent depending on the the quantity inside. You would could lift it by a backhoe, an excavator, or a crane truck. And then you would obviously need to transport, so there's a hauling cost. And you need somewhere to send it. And at the moment, there is no place near us to send food waste organics for composting. The cost per unit is seven thousand five hundred dollars plus HST plus installation. There are leasing options available. So down the road, should City of Peterborough or Muskoka or Simcoe introduce capacity for food waste organics? This is a potential way to collect and haul food waste materials from our sites to those processors, should they get capacity for us.
Okay, very interesting. And was it was it Peterborough was looking at doing an organic waste collection site?
Yeah, so the city of Peterborough is in the process of kind of citing their facility. They anticipate it will open in twenty twenty-four. So that's kind of a timeline. Simcoe, the county of Simcoe is looking at doing an anaerobic digester for food waste. And Muskoka is looking at changing their covered system to an anaerobic as well. That's definitely where the province is pushing those processors to go to anaerobic decomposition.
Okay, so let's open it to the floor for questions, please. And I saw Counselor Clark first.
John, what's an anaerobic system?
Yeah, so anaerobic means lack of air. So it's typically being done with liquids. You can accommodate typically, you can accommodate also things like sometimes diapers, things like that, because they're able to skim off the plastics. And typically, then you're able to to create energy in some of them, some of the facilities through anaerobic decomposition. This is definitely where the province seems to be directing processors to go. Durham Region, for example, is exploring this as well.
And one further question, John, any in terms of private groups such as Abbey Gardens, whatever, getting into, you know, doing the doing the work on on organics and and converting this into fertilizer soils, those kind of things?
Yeah, so I have spoken to Abbey Gardens and they had a U-Links project around composting on their facility and how it could happen. The challenge, I think, and I don't want to speak for Abbey Gardens, but I think one of the challenges they face is if they accept food waste from outside of their operations, then they technically are a waste disposal site and have to follow all the rules of the province. And that is a bit of a barrier to them accepting food waste from other locations. But it is, I I composting is definitely something Abbey Gardens is quite interested in pursuing.
Okay, any other further questions to John? Okay, any other further questions to John? Uh I see councillor Smith and then councillor McKechnie next.
Thank you. Um. With this uh Moloch system, uh you know, one of one of the issues that you've identified passed, if we start collecting organics as a separate stream. Is that it requires a ministry approval and that seems to be a very long process. In fact, you. Like one municipality that's been waiting several years. Google. The Moloches require a ministry approval?
It would, yes, because it would be a source separated material being collected separately. Um our uh environmental compliance approval requires at least a year um before the. Ministry would give permission for us to install those essentially. But the the real follow-up question is where do we send the material once we've collected it? At the moment, there's nowhere to send it to be processed.
I understand. Yeah, I I got that. And but we, of course, haul the garbage. Um you know, which is organic waste and other refuse. Uh we haul that over five hundred kilometers. So uh hauling is not uh, you know, is a greater problem for us. We we seem to be okay with that. Uh I wondered, though, if uh even rather than waiting for. You know, the city of Peterborough or Muskoka or somebody to uh be willing to accept our organic waste. Um you know, have you engaged in conversations with the other um. Lower tiers across Halliburton County? Is there enough organic waste uh being created uh across the county? That um you know, maybe uh uh some type of disposal facility. Or the entire uh area of Halliburton County would uh make sense from an organic point of view. As opposed to uh eventually having to haul it, you know, outside the county.
Yeah, so we're definitely, I'm in conversation with my counterparts at the other local municipalities around food waste organics. It is definitely a hot topic for all of us. Um one of the. Challenges we face is we don't actually know how much food waste is in our garbage stream. One of the recommendations from the county's climate change mitigation plan is that we conduct a four-season waste audit. To actually understand how much is in our garbage and how much of that would be food waste. We have had some preliminary discussions, just get a sense of cost of what we did. Do a waste audit, so that will be something we'll be bringing in the next budget cycle. Um is what those potentials costs could be. It it is not inexpensive to do a waste audit professionally with uh with trained waste auditors. Um. Composting food waste, I mean, obviously you have uh regulatory requirements from the province, but there are also. Equipment considerations. Um what technology do we use? And if it's all four local municipalities pulling together. Um where is that like, where is that site located? So it is, it is a kind of a bigger discussion than. Uh this initial update report, but it is, I mean, we're we're open to any possibility. Um it just really depends on the operational and capital cost to to build a facility like that. And whether the province would even approve an open windrow site when they're definitely their pushes towards anaerobic, which would be. Pretty costly, I suspect, for a municipality of DICE Art or all of the four local municipalities to absorb.
Yeah, well, uh thank you. And you know, I I think uh uh you know, Mayor Roberts indicated that. Uh a lot of interest in our community and and so uh. Um you know, I'd urge you to continue to look at uh possibilities. Uh waste disposal costs us a lot of money now. And uh and so uh we've got an existing uh. Uh expense stream, if you like, that uh um can help fund um, you know, something else and um and as with so many other things. Uh where there is uh, you know, some new technology or some capability that, you know, needs to be tried out. To uh uh come forward with a proposal and uh and let the council. Feel on that and decide uh again, based on the demand of our community to we find a better way of dealing with this waste. Um you know, uh I think we need uh some specific recommendation that says uh, hey, here's something to try. And yes, it costs something, but uh maybe council will decide that trade-off is worthwhile.
Okay, I did acknowledge councillor McKechnie next, but Rob, maybe I'll just, Rob's got his hand up and then I'll go to councillor McKechnie if that's okay. Thanks.
Yeah, just uh for John Watson, I was I was wondering if you were able to share um maybe some rough costs and capacity of. Maybe the the site in Peterborough, I know you and I were talking about, just to give council kind of an idea of of scale.
Yeah, for sure. I'll just give you one second. Should have had that more readily available. I do have it. I'm giving you one second.
I mean, I could guess, but I've been wrong before, so.
A lot.
It is, it is a lot. It's definitely a. A lot. And and it really, it's making sure the size of the uh facility is appropriate. So sometimes the, as you start to get into lower materials, it's not really economically uh. Suitable to build that sort of facility when you have a small quantity.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, and it's okay if you if you if you don't have that information readily right now, it's okay because we did one thing, though, that we did ask, and I think uh. Uh councillor Smith is that we did do these quarterly reports so that we know when he, John, is speaking with his counterparts, not just within our local. A township, but reaching farther field to Peterborough, Muskoka, et cetera, farther south from us. Um and east and west and to see, you know, so that so we will be prepared and ready for when we can do a little bit more. Uh we we talked about the sales of our digesters and composters that we're doing. Um I wanted to take it to councillor McKechnie next, if I could. And then I have one other thing to add as well. So councillor McKechnie?
Thank you. Uh John, just um when you're talking to all your counterparts and any other uh people in the province, is there not? Anybody talking about incinerating garbage?
Um.
Is it only Walt McKechnie? Is Walt McKechnie the only guy that's talking about incinerating garbage?
Nope. Uh it's incinerating garbage or energy from waste is definitely a topic that. Many of us in the municipal waste sector are very interested in. Um the challenge, obviously, within. Is that there's a lot of provincial regulations around that kind of facility. There are two operating in Ontario at the moment. Um one by Durham Region and York Region that can only accept waste from those two regional municipalities. And one in Peel, which is privately owned. Um just to give a sense on the EFW, the Energy From Waste Facilities. The operating cost of the one in Durham is sixteen point eight million dollars per year. Um the capital cost was two hundred and fifty-five million dollars um for construction and twenty month, twenty-nine million dollars for the environmental assessment. Um and that is the smallest size energy from waste facility that uh would be built. Um so that's just to give a sense of scale. That's a hundred and forty thousand metric tons per year. Um I do have, sorry, the the city of Peterborough's composting facility, it's expected to cost at least fifteen million dollars. To to build that facility, just a sense of of scale around those different processing. Um. Yeah, energy from waste is always being discussed. It really just depends on provincial direction. And obviously, right now, there's a focus on diverting material before we get to landfill or incineration.
So we can continue to encourage the individual homeowner. It makes it especially hard, though, for a commercial. Uh unless they are disposed, de- dealing with it, such as Abbey Gardens on their own site. Um I I think I referenced one time seeing in Newfoundland uh at a restaurant, the the big black, they almost look like a cement mixer and the one, you know, they're moving ever so slowly and. The one's active, the composting, and one is that where they're putting new material in. So you know, th- there are small-scale things like that, but uh uh some restaurants don't have that space out back or whatever. Or grocery stores and whatnot. There also is the uh, and you've been sharing advertising on our social media channels, the. Pilot project with Algonquin Highlands, and maybe you can just speak to that of the whatever it's called, the your little desktop kitchen top thing.
Yeah, so Algonquin Highlands is doing a a pilot right now where um residents can purchase a small composting unit that is actually operated electric. Electrically. So you keep it in your kitchen, you're putting your food waste into it, and it is uh working to create compost in a very quick. Um timeframe because it's being kept at the proper temperature and it's uh stirring enough to get the air into it to break it down. Um so we're just waiting to see kind of the results from that pilot project with the responses from residents using it. And also, obviously, the energy considerations of having that kind of uh machine operating in your kitchen all the time.
Yes, exactly. So the the uh. Subject uh is is important to all of us and we appreciate your update on this and uh. Keep going forward and uh use use less and compost more. Um so I do need a mover and seconder for this to receive the report, councillor McKechnie.
Could I just uh ask John one more quick question?
Of course.
John, um so you're saying that the one in Durham, that's the smallest one you can build? Because the people I talk to, they tell me you can build smaller ones, incinerators.
Um Cavanta, which is the company that owns the that operates the Durham facility, that is the smallest size that they will build anywhere in the world. And the one that's in Peel in Brampton is basically the exact same size. So maybe different for different types of uh. Items, but on the municipal waste, it tends to be that size for an energy from waste facility.
So we're just counting on trucking her down to Chatham for the next. For the five years or fifty years, right? So you're predicting it's gonna happen here?
Or possibly Peterborough. A twenty twenty-four is not that far off in terms of any kind of facility, a municipal facility of that scale. Um but uh then we also, if that's. The way that we do end up, can end up going, then we have to accommodate our landfills to be able to. As John explained already, to when when now, soon as you're separating another type of material, we have to get that under our certificate of approval to make sure and. Uh make sure people don't contaminate it. If it's pure organic waste. Um one of the concerns that I always have with something on a municipal scale is that um. Uh e- especially if they're going to be using it for composting, if it's not, you know, what happens if people. Don't sort properly. There's lots of, there's, we could talk about this probably all morning.
I was talking about incinerating. Like the one in Durham there. I mean, it it seems to work.
Yeah, but you were talking about trucking. I hope I hope that uh the facility in Peterborough would accept uh. Organic waste from Halliburton County in twenty twenty-four. And that's something that we can sort of be preparing for. Councillor Smith?
Well, that's a, you know, it's a great point that uh I'd I'd like to ask John about, if I might. Uh. John, have have we indicated uh uh to the city of Peterborough that uh we would like? Um confirmation that they would be willing in twenty twenty-four to accept organic waste? They know that uh we have an interest in uh and would pay them something uh, you know, for that opportunity.
They are aware. Um not, I would not say officially, but we've definitely had conversations between staff. About that and knowing that they are purposely building capacity. Access to them so that they could sell it to other municipalities. And they are, they are definitely aware that DICE Art is this is something we're looking at.
I wonder uh, Madam Mayor, if it might be appropriate uh um for us to to make that more official. Um in other words, it doesn't need to be today, but maybe there's a report that would come back from uh. Uh from, you know, John or other staff, um you know, at a at future committee meeting or near-future committee meeting or a council meeting. Where there's a a letter that goes from uh uh, you know, you as the mayor or DICE Art council to the city of Peterborough. Uh officially stating that we would be uh interested and uh we would be committed. To uh shipping organic waste uh to their facility. Um you've been given us some idea of the uh of the amount that we think we would have. Uh even a ballpark number so that um, you know, come twenty twenty-four, we don't find out that they've made commitments to others and didn't realize or, you know. Whatever, that, you know, we get in the queue and uh and they know that uh. Um you know, our our interest is uh is specific and uh if they're looking for us to do something to support the initiative. Uh prior to twenty twenty-four, that we would have that guaranteed capacity. Uh you know, that might be a tangible step that we take now and uh. And start to share with our community that uh, yeah, it's not just a uh, you know, a rough idea. There's a specific plans and commitments in place.
Yes, I I I I'd be hesitant to adding anything to the resolution. I think we would have to give uh put some more thought into it. So maybe just, John, you you've heard council will receive this right now. Uh we can certainly maybe even be talking about it in our budget because I think John's gonna have to. Do that research on what that means, how we accept it, with we how we have uh several uh waste disposal sites. So having that then. Facility at each one, or do we only, anyway, there's a lot, a lot to it. But I do agree with you is uh we need to start making the steps now, so um. Rob, go ahead.
Uh thanks, Madam Mayor. It 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 could be something as simple as just an expression of interest uh with the with Peterborough without getting into the nuts and bolts with it right now. Um you know, maybe with the next update, we include something to that effect, just to send off to them to, you know, maybe as a placeholder until we can get some some firmer numbers for them.
Yeah, good idea. Is everyone comfortable with that? Tamara, do I need to add that to the resolution?
I just think that uh, you know, getting that on the record.
Oh, I agree.
That uh, you know. Would be valuable.
Absolutely. Tamara, do I need to add that to the resolution at this point?
No, you're fine.
I thought so. Okay, so I let's to to move on. Let's get a mover-seconder to receive this report and uh. Uh councillor Clark, councillor Donaldson, is that you? Okay, you're in the dark of it there. Uh so moved by councillor Clark, seconded by councillor Donaldson. Be resolved at the committee, the whole receives food waste organics update report for information. All in favor? Okay, carries? Um and next, this is interesting. The report on illegal dumping conducted by Fleming College's Sustainable Waste Management Program.
Yeah, so earlier in January, ca- council approved a research project on illegal dumping conducted by Fleming College. Um and facilitated by U-Links. The research project was specifically addressing illegal dumping uh and not littering. And kind of distinction is just made about the spontaneity of the act or kind of the the size of the material potentially. Um what the the students did a fantastic job, I have to say. They did, their report is quite thorough and. Um they really did a deep, deep dive in some really interesting topics. Um. It's kind of interesting looking at the motivation behaviors behind illegal dumping. Um and obviously, it's oftentimes a lack of awareness about the illegality of illegal dumping. And also that some individuals who do illegally dump. Um do so, but they're, they blame others for their actions, um which is uh kind of an interesting thing. They also did a really deep dive into Airbnb listings in DICE Art. Um and they found that nearly half of the sample that they investigated failed to mention waste disposal in their listings. Um so that uh those that did list waste management in their listings, listings often placed it. In locations that required multiple clicks to get to that piece of information. So before arriving here. They may, the renter may not know that you have to bring your waste to a site and you need a landfill card and things like that. Um the report recommended that we do some more data collection. So we have an online form on our website to help facilitate that and help generate. Um information about hotspots for legal dumping. They also recommended putting signage up at any of those hotspots that get a kind of frequent flyers of legal dumping. And also promotional material really targeting short-term renters so that they're aware of how how and when to dispose of their waste. Um the students also, obviously, were aware that uh DICE Art and the county of Halliburton were are looking at short-term renters and accommodation licensing potentially. Um and the student's recommendation is that um should a short-term license uh come to be, that it definitely uh direct. Uh property owners of those short-term rentals to include relevant waste management information in online bookings and on property.
Well, they did an extremely detailed report and you also sort of did a cost value of of what that would have done if we had gone um out to some of. For-profit companies. So we thank them for their. For their uh for their work on this, and I'm sure there'll be some comments, questions, et cetera, from council. So I will turn councillor Clark's hand up first. Go ahead.
Yeah, um thank you, John. That's a very detailed report and 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 really good information. Um and it's and it's good that they were able to kind of track on some some of the sources of this. Um as you mentioned, the Airbnbs is uh or or the short-term rentals is a big issue. And I think it's an important point that's gonna have to be captured in the licensing stuff that's going forward at, you know, to the county. I think it's important that if somebody's not um stepping up and and providing for um a process for people dealing with their waste, that their license should be pulled. They shouldn't be on them on the short-term rental market. Uh so hopefully, the the county addresses that. The big thing, though, is also some of the cultural pieces that they identified. And and what I mean by that is is. If the township is not responsive and and clearing, let's say somebody's going down back lanes, they don't see a garbage bin on their way home, so they just throw it out. Um that leads, that leads to to, I I guess, inspiring other people to do the same. And and the reason I'm I'm thinking of that is I've had family who've who've been with NATO overseas, for example, in some. Um some of the East European countries where there's a culture where they don't care about communities, so they just dump. So they just dump garbage, anything in on the side of the road and they just think that's part of life. That's not a culture we want. It's important that we inspire our communities, that we take pride in our communities. And there's a big economic, and the, the fact that they identified the economic impacts in this as well. If we're viewed as a community where people do dump, we don't pick up, that's going to impact people wanting to come here. So there's, so there's a lot of, you know, there's, there's a lot of bits and pieces to this report and, and congratulate you on guidance you gave this group. I know, I think it was an entire class, I think, from Fleming that was working on this. But it's, it's a very well researched and, and, and the fact that they gave a lot of insight into Halliburton County and challenges. So thank you very much for that. I think it's going to be something we can reference one forward.
Thank you, Larry. I'll turn to Counselor Smith next.
Thank you. And I'd echo some of Counselor Clark's comments. It is an insightful report. I guess the one thing that struck me most, I, I I thought it was a local issue, but this is a local issue everywhere. You know, not just elsewhere in Ontario or Canada, you know, there are many examples there through the United States. And we've been talking about some creative approaches they've taken in India to, you know, to address the, you know, the challenges. But John, a specific question for you. Do we track, like, does it, you know, it, it says it's a problem everywhere, but it doesn't say how big a problem it is in DICEART. And I wondered if, you know, back to your earlier comment in the organic waste area, we don't know how much we collect. Do we keep a, a log, if you like, when there's a, a report of illegal dumping? Or if, you know, our roads crew is out on Kinesis Lake Road and they find three bags of garbage that have been dumped on the roadside or they find a refrigerator or whatever? So that we at least start to have a record of how big a problem this is? And, and then kind of once you start measuring it and you, you know, how much you want to invest in it or, or if you take some action, get a sense of the result. Oh, as a result of some regulations related to short-term rental, now there is less illegal dumping occurring. We don't measure it, we'll never know. And so could you, if, if you haven't, would it make sense to start tracking? You know, all reported incidents of illegal dump?
Yeah, so through the online reporting system, we are able to track, kind of list all of the, the reports that come in. That is obviously the ones that residents have reported to us through that system. So if there are instances of the roads department, for example, I just seeing stuff and picking it up and that's not captured in that system. But I'm sure Robert Jeff could speak to how it's maybe captured in any logs that are being done.
Rob, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, we do track wages through the roads department for litter and debris pickup. And just looking at it now, we're averaging about 20, 25 man-hours per year picking it up. So they're not huge numbers, but it's certainly there.
I would say too, in the parks department, although we don't have any staff on board with us right now, but I, I know speaking to the parks employee, pretty much every morning, a garbage can around town will have, you know, a shopping bag style, not, not a big, huge, clear garbage bag. But people put, and they, they put it beside the garbage can because it's way too big to fit in. But throughout Headlake Park and throughout all the garbage, certainly in and around the village, pretty much it's a daily occurrence. So I don't know if we could ask parks to be keeping track of that, Tamara, as well. Good point. Okay. Anything further on this? Again, if we can pass our thanks on and we do an honorarium of $1,500 that was included in our budget. So I will have a mover in a second or to receive this excellent report. Counselor Clark and seconded by Counselor Smith. Be resolved that the committee, the whole, receive a report on illegal dumping conducted by Fleming College's Sustainable Waste Management Program. All in favor? That's Carrie. And can you pass on our thanks to the class?
Definitely, yeah. They were, they were fantastic.
Great. Maybe they're watching this, so you can tell them to watch the YouTube. Okay, we have two more things. My goodness, public works, you kept us busy today. Wow, okay, keep going, you're next.
Yeah, so this next report is around a new agreement for, to deal with the new regulation. So on June 8th, the Ministry of Environment, Conservation and Parks approved Ontario Regulation 44921, hazardous and special products. This new reg, regulation comes into effect on October 1st of this year. The previous hazardous waste program is winding up on September 30th. And so municipalities across Ontario are going to have to enter into new agreements with individual producers of hazardous, of designated hazardous waste materials or producer responsibility organizations, PROs, that will collect, manage and promote the recycling or proper disposal of these designated materials. So this is the first agreement with the Automotive Material Stewardship, which includes basic automotive materials like oil filters, for example. This new agreement would start on October 1st. We have no hazardous waste stays in 2021 after October 1st. So really setting the scene for 2022. And basically the, the rate that we would receive is the same that we would have under the previous agreement. And I anticipate there's probably going to be four or five of these types of agreements for the hazardous and special products coming out in the next few months as we start to deal with more of these producer responsibility organizations.
Okay, great. Any questions on this? Counselor Smith?
Yeah, thank you. So John, I was, I was quite surprised that the, the amount we're going to be paid, the $1,100 per metric ton is unchanged from the previous agreement. You know, we've, at a high level, it's always been talked about at the, you know, the recycling programs, that about half of the past is borne by the municipal taxpayer and about half is borne by the, by the producers under the old rules. And the new rules were supposed to make the producers fully responsible. So if, you know, when our hazardous waste collection days actually cost us net costs quite a bit of money, which is why we only have three of them. So, so why hasn't the rate gone up? And, you know, are, do you think we are recovering our full costs under this approach for at least the automotive waste here?
Yeah, so the 50/50 split that you referred to is specifically about Blue Box. Under this regulation, for hazardous waste, the producer is fully responsible for their products only. So the, the amount that they'd be giving us is exclusively for the materials we collect that are designated for them to manage. Not all hazardous waste is designated materials. So there are materials that we, that are hazardous that are not funded by anyone except the taxpayer. And that is the reality of the way this regulation happened. Admittedly, a lot of municipalities in Ontario are not happy with how this regulation has happened because there are some materials that should perhaps be designated that aren't and are being, having to be absorbed by the taxpayer essentially. The challenge we encounter around contracts is if you don't, if you don't go with them, then the taxpayer is responsible for these materials, right? Like this is the organization that's managing these items and this is what they're willing to pay us. And if we don't want it, then we're on our own essentially. This is going to be the reality, this is the new world where it's very one-sided negotiation with some of these producers and that, that's the reality that we're coming into.
So if I might then ask, what, you know, this is for, and we're only allowed to accept waste from individual property owners as opposed to commercial enterprises. So most automotive waste, whether it's fluids or the oil filters, you know, don't actually come from property owners. It's been quite a while since I changed my own oil. And so there's a commercial enterprise that, you know, takes my stuff and, and that of most property owners. So what do they do with it? And, and do they get paid the same amount or how does that work on the commercial side?
The commercial side is responsible for arranging for their own collection of these materials at their own cost. They're not included in our, in our hazardous waste days that we have, which are specifically for residents. The automotive materials that are included in this program are oil filters, oil containers and antifreeze. And at our hazardous waste days, residents definitely have these items in their homes, whether it be from lawn mowers, boats, cars, things that have been sitting in the garage for 20 years. Like they definitely exist and, and we do collect a fair amount of them.
Rob, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, just for example, at our roads garage, we do have a company come in for waste oil, oil filters, that kind of thing. They do become manifested loads and we do pay for it.
Okay, yeah, good point. And so, so therefore the other body shops or work, automotive centers would have their own pickups. Uh, okay. Always interesting talking about, like I said, we've got to use less and recycle more. Anyway, thank you for that. Mover second or please for this report. Counselor Clark, Counselor Wood Roberts. Be resolved that the committee, the whole recommends that the bylaw to authorize the execution of the new hazardous and special products, services agreement with the Automotive Materials Stewardship Incorporated be brought forward to the August 24, 2021 council meeting for approval. All in favor? Carrie? One more item under Blue Box.
Yeah, so this is a, this report is for information purposes only. I just want to be very clear about this. It's kind of setting the scene for what's happening around the Blue Box in Ontario. So on June 3rd of this year, the ministry released its new Blue Box regulation, 39121. This new regulation comes into effect on July 1st of 2023 and it has a three-year transition period. DICEART and the other local municipalities in Halliburton County would transition in 2024 into the new program. Under this new program, the producers of the Blue Box materials will be fully responsible for funding the Blue Box program on the, for residents. And eventually council will have to make a decision between two options. Option one is to become a paid service provider to operate the Blue Box program on behalf of the producers or producer responsibility organizations. Or option two would be to hand over the full operational responsibility of the Blue Box program to the producers or PROs. This is a big kettle of fish that every single municipality in Ontario is going to be dealing with over the next few months and few years. Some of the municipalities that are transitioning in 2023 will start to have reports going to their councils this coming fall, basically outlining if they're in or out as, as we're saying now. And it really potentially has implications to our residents about where they would drop off recycling materials. It also has implications around our requirement to be more stringent about contamination levels. There's definitely a, a lot of considerations for council to explore and we will be presenting more reports to council throughout the coming year as we likely will have to make our decision next in 2022, probably before the fall.
Okay, so thank you for that brief update. And as you say, this is for information purposes. I think we will be having many conversations in the future. If we could just, I mean, we can ask John questions now, but I think it's a bit premature. I think we should wait till we get more information. This is for a heads up for the changes that are coming with Blue Box, Blue Box program. This is Oreg. And so, I mean, you can ask, I'm not saying don't ask a question now, but we'll have plenty of time and plenty of conversation. But go ahead, Counselor Smith.
Thank you. I appreciate you opening that door. So I won't get into, you know, lots of the open-ended questions that, you know, relate to budget and options we might pursue and so forth. But on you, your report, you know, and, and your verbal comments there mentioned the need for more for better numbers, if you like, in terms of the, the threshold regarding contamination of the recycled material and that we're not here where we need to be. I, I wondered first, are, are we alone in that regard? Or, you know, are other small communities kind of in the same situation we are in an unacceptable high level of contamination right now?
I'm content. Contamination rates in Blue Box is a big issue everywhere in the province. It's not exclusive to DICEART. One of the challenges, I think, that we in DICEART and the other local municipalities have is we don't really have excellent data on that contamination rate. That would be something we could find out through our waste audits that we're proposing in the 2022 budget to do, to really understand what is appearing in the Blue Box. Obviously, in an urban setting with curbside collection, the collectors can simply say, we're not picking up at this house when they see that Blue Box out that's contaminated. For a depot-only system, it becomes challenging when someone has arrived on site and you're saying you can't drop off that bag here. That, and that is potentially something that in the new program would maybe need to be enforced if we were the service provider. For example, is it, this, this speculation, but that is a potential.
Yeah. Well, it's a, it's a big issue and I know you do some good work now in terms of trying to educate people, media and so forth, that maybe it's something, an aspect of, of garbage disposal that needs more emphasis in terms of training people on how to do a better job to reduce the contamination. The other, I got a variety of questions, but maybe just ask one more. There's a number of the services that are defined based on population number. And do we know if, if the population numbers that would be used, you know, in those calculations are permanent residents only? Or is it a combination of permanent and seasonal residents? As they, as they do, you know, in charging us for OPP services, for example, they lump in both seasonal and permanent. Will they be doing the same year?
They will because it's based on property essentially. So it's a number of households, including multi-residential households. There is a weird date, like in August of 2019, that's kind of the numbers that they used as they built this regulation. And there are some considerations for normal increases to, to population due to new, new housing, for example. But there, there's some like finicky stuff there around, if we suddenly decided to start servicing a, a brand new sector, they may say that you can't include that in your Blue Box program.
Okay, I, I, like I say, I think this is just the beginning of a, a long conversation. And, you know, just for, for sake of time, we could ask John all kinds of questions today, but he doesn't know the answer. So I, I'd like to just receive this report if possible. Rob, do you want to add one more thing?
Oh, yeah, just for John Watson. Assuming we need to make a decision as early as fall next year, whether we're in or out. If we're going to move ahead with this waste audit in the 2022 budget, is it safe to say we should be moving on it sooner than later?
That would be ideal. I mean, part of our waste audit, we wanted to do four seasons because the waste in the summertime is different than the waste in the, in the wintertime. So I know the rough estimate is approximately $15,000 per season, just as a sense of, of scope. But it gives us really good information around organics, around Blue Box. So if we're able to do even like Jan, February, March, I'm making stuff up, June, that gives us, or July, that gives us some good information about at least three of the seasons potentially.
Well, and one thing you referenced, John, that, for, for budget, but there are oftentimes when we can pre-approve something. So if you think that time is of the essence, maybe, Rob, you're considering that to bring forward a, a report and council can make a decision and then that item gets pre-approved and is in the budget. So that's something that I, I think, I see nods from council that that should be brought forward for our consideration earlier than the beginning budget talks, which either take place middle of December or really January. Counselor Smith?
Thank you. Just to follow up on that point, it's something that should be started even before January. In other words, oh, should we start a fall waste audit, you know, in October? You know, our, our landfill hours will change after Thanksgiving. And setting aside the budget considerations for a second, would it make sense to start, you know, a, a waste audit as soon as then? as then? You know, and if that was something that staff believed made sense, could they bring that report forward to, to council with a recommendation and, you know, let council deal with, okay, well, we want to free up some money to, to begin spending as recently, as, as, as soon as, you know, rather than waiting until the, you know, the arbitrary start of January 1st of the new year?
So maybe defer to Barbara on this one. We don't generally in this department have any sort of reserves. It would be using money that isn't in 2021's budget. Is that a possibility to go ahead, even though, I mean, there's working, there's development reserve, there's, there's other ways to pull some money? Should we, so Barbara, if you can maybe speak to the financial component of that?
Yes. So definitely, the project can commence in the fall. And, you know, perhaps John and I can look at the environment budget to see if there's some leverage in other areas that could fund the, the project. And definitely earmark it for the 2022 budget deliberations, any of the work that would spill over into 2022.
Okay, so then this time I'm going to defer to Tamara if I need to add anything to this, because at first John was just asking us to receive the report, and we've already referenced an organic waste audit for 2022. But if we want to do and further that, we don't have to accept it, but, and I'm just not sure the timing, you're not going to come back with your report in two weeks to council, so be to another committee. Tamara?
Yeah, I was just going to suggest that as part of John's regular update at the next committee meeting, he bring back any new information he has.
Okay. So I don't, can we just do that verbally?
Yeah, and I'm making a note of it in the minutes.
Thank you. Okay, so then I will just ask the resolution to receive the report, but we've had good conversation. And John, you know what to do, I believe. Nods. John Watson, very good. Okay, so mover, second, dear?
Could I ask, could I make a comment first?
Yeah, sure.
I had my finger up, maybe you couldn't see.
I'm sorry. No, I didn't.
No, not a big deal. No, I just want to say something positive about our community. I mean, somebody made reference that, do we contaminate more? I mean, I drive around these roads a lot, just like we all do. We all travel. I think our, our highways, our ditches, like Rob referenced, 25 hours cleaning out ditches and that. So I, I think we have tremendous taxpayers, and they really appreciate and they really respect our community. So I think we're going to get, always get better at it. But I, I think we got a great community, and people are very conscientious and proud of it.
Thank you, Walt. Or Counsel McKenna, pardon my familiarity. Okay, so then we will receive this report, then we're going to be taking a 15-minute break. So mover, second, please. Counsel Clark, and seconded by Counsel Smith. It resulted that the committee, the whole receives this report for informational purposes about the new Ontario Regulation 391-21 Blue Box. All in favor? Okay, great. Well, John, you certainly had lot, oh, that was carried, thank you. You certainly had lots to tell us, and you have lots more to do now. But it is ongoing, and I think this is where we can be leaders, even though we have a small community, we do not need to be followers, and we need to get ahead of this. We can't bury our heads in the, to assume that our garbage is, it's going to get more and more complicated dealing with our waste. So at this time, I'm going to call for a 15-minute recess. It's almost 10:35, so that's to 10:50. We will reconvene at 10:50, at 10 to 11. So you can just turn your cameras off and microphones off, and we'll see you at 10 to 11. Thank you. The parks, recreation, and events regarding the video surveillance at Headlake Park. And I believe Tamara, you're going to speak to this, because Andrea Mueller is on vacation.
Yeah, this is similar to a report you received a couple months ago regarding the Welcome Center video cameras. It's part of our camera and surveillance policy to ensure that we provide public notice and do a public survey. So that will be going on the website. We're looking at various areas in the park that have received vandalism, and not so much positive activity in the last while, in several years. So basically, we're asking that pending positive outcome from the surveys, that we be given permission to proceed with the camera work to ensure we get it done this fall.
Yeah. Okay, and so just, can you remind council, the surveys, where are they done? Where are they posted? How can people comment from the public on these surveys?
They'll be on our website, and they typically put it through social media as well, the links.
Okay. And also, do you in the survey have to say a specific location, for instance, on the pole beside the fountain? Or can you just say in Headlake Park vicinity? Very good.
Vicinity.
Great. Any other questions? Tamara, go ahead.
Just a note to remind the public that this isn't general surveillance that anybody can access. It's only accessible by certain staff, like myself. If there was an incident that happened in the park, we would be able to review the footage and help use it for enforcement activity. But it's not just so that we can watch everybody, and it's for a very specific purpose.
Thank you. And we should remember that from, from the survey, and also the, the comments from when we did at the Welcome Center. And just to note that there, like you said, there has been some vandalism there, at the band show in particular, which is very disheartening to see. And, you know, when there was some vandalism report a couple of, I don't know if it was a year ago or more, I mean, the first thing the OPP do is ask for our surveillance. The OPP are completely in support of this. And this goes through our IT department, et cetera. So any further comments on that? If not, we do have a motion to receive the report and approve use of video surveillance? Counsel Smith is moving that, and seconded by Counsel Donaldson. It resulted that the committee, the whole receives the video camera surveillance report as information. Further pending positive survey results, the committee, the whole recommends that council approve the use of video surveillance cameras at Headlake Park in vicinity. All in favor? Okay, thank you. Carrie. So thank you for that, Tamara. And then we'll next move to a report from the museum. And is Kate joining us today? Okay.
Hello, how's everyone doing?
Very well, very well.
So the, the big news is the fact that the museum is once again open. And we are absolutely delighted. So we're seeing visitors through the building from all over Ontario. Certainly, people are, are out and about, people are exploring locally this summer, and much as, much as people were last summer. And yeah, it's just very exciting to have the doors open again. We're certainly doing a lot still with our outdoor spaces, because we know that people are feeling, you know, feeling a bit more comfortable still being, being outside or combining outdoors and indoors. And we do, we're still keeping numbers small inside our interior spaces. But yes, it's just very exciting to have things open again. And yeah, we're looking forward to those brighter days.
Very good. I was walking through Green Park the other day and saw the outbuildings open as well, and a nice little sort of sandwich board sign saying, we're open, and there was people going through. So that's really, really nice to see. Any questions for Kate on the museum report? No? Okay, thank you, Kate, for that. I'll need a mover and a second then to receive. Counsel Clark, Counsel Wood Roberts. It resulted that committee, the whole acknowledges receipt of the Halliburton Highlands Museum report. All in favor? Okay, Carrie. Thanks, Kate.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next section is building and bylaw. And first, we'll wait till our staff come on board. There are two requests in a row here, from the people from the public, requesting DICEART council to do something. I'll just wait for staff. Okay, welcome, Robert. Welcome, Carl. Thank you very much. The first item that we have up is the letter from Elaine Schmidt regarding the no parking signs on the Green Lake Road. And I'm not sure if Robert's speaking to that? Or Carl?
I could speak to that. It's just, I spoke with, I can't even remember her name.
Elaine Schmidt?
Elaine Schmidt, that's it. And she's just, she's concerned about the safety hazard, that the road's narrow, and, and that anybody parking on the side of the road is blocking a lively of traffic, which I can agree with. But looking, looking for her, her letter would be up to council for, for staff direction, and we can go from there.
So what she's requesting is signage for said thing, but really, where, I mean, if you're parking on a road, do we not have a bylaw that says you can't park on road?
We do have a section in the parking bylaw that schedule, I believe, a restricts parking on certain roads in, in the municipality. Green Lake Road is not one of them.
Okay, so that's what I was thinking, is that we already would have a bylaw that you can't park obstructing a road on any road, but so?
That's also an offense, yes.
So that's what, I, I believe we already have that there. I'm not sure how much more signage is going to do. We, there's excellent parking at the West Guilford Recreation Center, and I've been on that road quite a bit myself. And there's also great parking at the other end. Down in, in Stanhold, they have a community center for, that many people use that to, as a, as a starting point for a, for a cycle bike ride along that road, North Shore and Green Lake Road. So I don't know, we'll open it up to the floor, Counsel Clark, and then second, Counsel Smith.
Thank you. To you, Madam Mayor. Rob, is there, what is the basis for not allowing parking on roads? Do we have a, a context or, or, or criteria that we use to define a road where we do not allow parking?
Honestly, I, I'm not sure what the, what the, the previous, why the roads that are on the schedule have been listed. I'm sure probably with safety restrictions on, on the road, that maybe it's just too narrow. There could be a whole number of things. I can't speak for the past, why, why they were, they're listed. As far as I know, we don't have a, really, we don't really have a criteria to look at. I mean, we can, I can go and investigate the road and, and, and take a look at it and see, and bring back a report if that's what they want. But honestly, I don't have a criteria for it.
Yeah, what I'm, what I'm looking at, Rob, is continuity or consistency in how we're applying. And it'd be nice to have some basis. Okay, if we got X number of roads that identified as, as no parking, you know, what is the basis for that? So then we have, then we then have a foundation for applying the rule elsewhere. Just to ensure that we're somewhat consistent in how we're looking at these.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, Counsel Smith?
Thank you. You know, I'm pretty familiar with this area, and there's a, a stretch of Green Lake Road, probably roughly 100 yards in length, when you first turn off Canesius Lake Road. There are no residences in that area. It's undeveloped. There's, you know, there's bush on both sides of the road. And, 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 you know, the letter says here that oftentimes there are three or four cars parked on the side of the road, and that's, that's quite correct. I often see, you know, the three, four cars parked there. They are, though, off the road. They're at least half in, in the long grass at the side of the road. And, you know, I, I've not seen any indication that it really prevents people from getting by. You know, in fact, that portion of Green Lake Road is probably wider than most of Green Lake Road. And, and I thought if, if people, you know, want to park and go cycling or walking along Green Lake Road, they're parking in the right area right now, frankly. You know, so, I mean, I understand that if you've got big trucks, as the, as the author of the letter does, coming and going, that, you know, it, it needs to be, those truckers need to be careful. But to me, it's not a big problem. And I, you know, I think we should receive the letter and, and move on.
Okay, so that is the resolution, although we could continue with further. But I, I will see if there's a second, or I'll take that as a mover for the note, just to receive the letter. Counsel McKenna?
So what we're saying is, the whole, if you want to have 10, four cars, 10 cars, 20, 30 cars, you can park all the way along there, all the way along Green Lake Road. If, if, if that, people don't know that's designated area, I guess. Or it's not a designated area, but I mean, from Green Lake Road, one end to the other, so basically, people can park. So what Counsel Smith's saying?
I, well, even in the, I'll let you speak, Counsel Smith, but even in the letter, it says oftentimes there's only three or four. There aren't 10. I, I don't think that it is that huge problem. If, as long as a car is not blocking the roadway or blocking a driveway, which there aren't any driveways in the area. While she sees it as a concern, I don't think that signage is warranted there, myself. But Counsel Smith, did you want to respond to Counsel McKenna?
Well, I, I, just as you did, I, I note that the, the area of concern is, is near the intersection of Canesius Lake Road. And, and, you know, that's where I see cars parked. There are other places along Green Lake Road, just as any other road in the municipality, that people who live there sometimes park a vehicle, you know, on the side of the road instead of in their driveway. And, but, you know, my observation is that these people that are, are walking or cycling, park in the right area, as opposed to in front of the, the residents. You know, the cottages around Green Lake Road, they're, they're parking at the area that there's, you know, leased, leased in. You know, I, I think it's great that people get out, want to walk or cycle, and, you know, so we should apply that. It's, not everybody goes to Headlake Park to do that.
No.
And, you know, so.
Okay, thank you. And Counsel?
I've not had a complaint from, I've not had a complaint from anybody else on Green Lake Road about parking, other than one of the residents on Green Lake Road actually took it upon himself to park his pickup truck on the road every day and put pylons there in an effort to slow traffic. The problem on Green Lake Road that's reported to me isn't people walking or cycling, it's the speed of the cars. And, you know, so a couple of vehicles parked in the road actually effectively slowed traffic. That's a good thing.
Counsel Clark?
For purposes of this request on, on, you know, appropriateness of, of having no parking, can we go forward with perhaps Rob doing a little investigation, just so we know the kind of situations where we have supported no parking before? And at least it gives us a bit of a base if we have to go back and revisit this. For, again, for the purposes of being somewhat consistent in how we're looking at how we're applying areas of no parking, and it gives us, at least it gives us a basis to work from. And I, 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 I see the discussion on number of cars and all the rest of it, but that's not what the lady's asking for. The lady's asking for us to step up and do no parking, and what we're, we really haven't got a basis to make a decision on that with, is what my point is.
I suppose I think the only thing with that, Counsel Clark, is, and I'm more of a tendency to, to just support receiving the letter at this time. If we had 10 residents saying this is a chronic problem, and I, I, I understand and I respect her, her letter, and yet, we then are going to devote staff time to do what? To be, keep driving up there and see if there's one or two cars? I, I don't see this as a major problem myself. I see this as receiving the letter and moving on, and we can monitor it if we receive more complaints, and then deal with it at that time. But at this time, we have one caution. So, so I believe Counsel Smith was moving to just acknowledge receipt and move on.
No, no, the point, the point was the application. No, 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 the point, the point was the application of the bylaw. To do is the, you know, us going out and monitoring and all.
Of what we already have.
We had, I don't.
So is there a desire to do anything or receive the letter? Councilor Smith has moved to receive the letter. Is there a second or for that? Counselor Donaldson? So all in favor? Okay, so there's three and I, okay, so that that does carry. I'm sorry, it's Councilor Smith and Councilor Donaldson. And that did carry. Okay, next, we are going to move on to another request, which is, this is unusual, but sign of the times. Robert, I'm going to let you speak to this one as well, the exotic animal request by law.
I'm based off your email that, Madam Mayor, that you sent me from Ms. Hilo. I know that Highlands East has put in a a an exotic animals bylaw due to some, some, I guess, some bigger cats in 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 their municipality. As I, I'm not aware of any of those issues here in in DICER at this time. I I don't know if we really need to to explore that option.
I don't know either, but I didn't, I I so I did receive that. I passed that on to you. But, you know, we also don't want it to be, oh, I see Carl's putting his hand up. I I just, I don't want to be caught off guard and then somebody get a complaint because somebody just sounds funny, but it's not, you know, has a tiger for a pet. So Carl, go ahead.
I so just a word of caution on this one. So if we do this reactionary, if somebody moves in and starts raising tiger or something, if we do that reactionary, those people would be grandfathered and would not have to comply with the new bylaw. So if we take the step and do it now, if we foresee this as being a problem, we don't want this in the municipality, probably a good idea to pass that bylaw before it becomes a problem.
I sort of concur. It seems a funny thing. And although if I don't know how, sorry, did Highlands East actually pass their bylaw?
Yes.
So so there is a, there's a resolution that we can receive her letter. And further, that directs staff to return to the committee of whole with a draft exotic animal bylaw for review and feedback. So is council sort of in favor of at least having Robert do some preliminary work? It could be very similar to, I don't mean to just simply cut and paste, but if somebody else has done the work, just like we've borrowed and copied before. Is council in support of of getting Robert to do some further investigation on this before it's too late before? Somebody has a boa constrictor and then they say, well, you don't have a bylaw against it, and as Carl just pointed out, it's grandfathered. All right, so is there a mover and a second or two to ask to the re to do the resolution? So Council Clark, Councilor Wood Roberts? We resolved that the committee of the whole acknowledges received the letter from Andrea Hilo requesting that council create an exotic exotic animal bylaw and further directs staff to return to the committee of the whole with a draft exotic animal bylaw for review and feedback. All in favor? Oh, Tammy wants to speak before I call the vote. Pardon me. You are just in the dark. It's I don't mean in the dark. It's your lighting. But I didn't see your hand. So council, I not recorded the vote. Go ahead.
No problem. I just want a quick, just in case somebody wants to do some research on this, because those cats are only like, not even fifteen kilometers from me. And if you want to do some research, it's Hastings Highlands that's started the whole thing. And it's just because Highlands East is close, the closest one of Halliburton County to Hastings Highlands. But you should just check out and see what they have had to deal with for the like since November, I think, is when they moved in. And and you can get the details. There's a lot of it. Because there's a lot for and a lot against, but that's how come it all come around was because the cats moved in. And and it's not just one or two cats. We've been up there to see them and it is quite a tourism draw. But some of the, some of the neighbors are more concerned about the cats than they are black bears coming into their yard. And when we talked to the owners, the cats, somebody had let them loose at another location, but the cats are quite, they come back to their own location to be fed. They don't, they're they're trained to, that that's where their food is. So they didn't think it was a big deal. But if any of you guys want to do some research on it, it's Hastings Highlands that that had the issue.
Yes, I I believe that that was in, yeah, that was in the letter from from Andrea. So and and I was aware of that. And that's, I mean, you know, we don't want to, we don't want a situation happen, even though we might think this this won't happen here. Why would people want, I I can't fathom why someone would want an exotic animal? However. Uh, go ahead, Councilor Smith.
Yeah, well, just to be clear here, if we are going to create a bylaw, you mentioned boa constrictors, for example. Is it the intention or the direction to staff to address a wide range of of exotic animals, or is it to address, you know, large cats? You know, I I say that because, you know, one of the most popular attractions for, you know, young kids is actually, you know, people who bring in reptiles, including snakes. You know, the Halliburton Outdoor Association and other groups, you know, sponsor these things. And and so I'd be reluctant to ban all exotic animals. Because, you know, to me, that's not necessary. And in fact, would be inconsistent with the the interest that many have on terms of some types of of animals, including, you know, pythons or boa constrictors. So.
Yes, no, I and I hear what you're saying. So I I think that's why the resolution just says that staff would return with a draft, and we can comment on the draft always in a bylaw. What's the definition of an exotic animal? So there would be probably a list of what that would mean. And then there might be exceptions for a traveling show, if you will, that's different from homeowner, a resident calling it a pet. My pet monkey.
Except that, you know, somebody has to live somewhere with these things if they're going to bring them to our community. And so if everybody said, I'm going to ban bull constructors or pythons, there would be no show to bring anywhere because nobody could have them. So, you know, I just, that's where I think there needs to be a little balance here. And, you know, make sure that we're not going too far.
Okay, so very good. So Councilor McKechnie?
Yeah, I like most animals, but I don't want any bull constructors or or lions next door to me when my grandkids are up. Somebody has a show, they bring it into town from where they travel around and take my kids to see them. But I definitely don't want them in my backyard.
Yeah, so so we are.
That's just me speaking, I'm sure.
I would say same, ditto. Really, all this resolution is asking Rob to do some work, directing staff to come back with a draft. He can look at what the draft of Highlands East or Hastings Highlands or neighboring municipalities, et cetera, to cover some of the comments that we've heard today. I did get a mover and a seconder. And so now I will call the vote to be all in favor.
That's all favor of of us.
Of directing staff to, I had read it, but I'll read it again, to receive the letter, but also to direct staff to return to the committee of the whole with a draft exotic animal bylaw for review and feedback. Okay, so in favor? So that carries. Okay, Robert? You've got some work to do there. Now, next is Carl, you're going to discuss the building permit activity report for June and July?
Yeah, so June and July. So our permit numbers continue to climb. They are very high, and it's definitely reflecting on the number of inspections that we're having to do. So we're definitely stretched for inspection vehicles and trying to coordinate all that. But we've we've added efficiencies that hopefully pay off once our staff are fully trained. We're staying on top of permit issuance and inspections. But it is, we're we're being pushed to the limit right now. Fairly good vote right now because we are fully staffed, but with new staffs.
That's that's good, good news to hear. Because obviously, at some point, those building permits turn into assessment dollars. So and it's great that people are investing and and building and building some beautiful places here. Any questions or comments to Carl? No? Uh, go ahead, John. Uh, Councilor Smith?
Uh, thank you. So Carl, you got the report here on on the building inspections with building permits. Any, anything to report with regard to septic inspections?
Not at this time. The septic inspection just started in August, so we won't be expecting anything until the end of August. Hopefully, maybe a report to 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 September's council meeting.
Okay, thank you, Carl.
Just on that, Madam Mayor, and I've copied you on some of them, but to bring it to council. Obviously, many of these septic inspections that are underway right now are are in my ward. Some would also be in Councilor McKechnie's ward. But I've had more of the WSP and their lack of responsiveness to both phone calls and emails, where people are, property owners are contacting them after receiving a letter. And 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 so and some of those property owners have contacted the municipal bu- building department people before they called me and been pulled by the municipal building department, that the department has had literally dozens of complaints about WSP.
So, Councilor Smith, I'm going to stop right there. Councilor Smith, I'm going to stop you there only because it isn't on the agenda. We just heard from Carl that we'll have a report. And what I've been telling, if somebody has contacted me and they they aren't happy, our our building department is managing those. They are passing those messages on. I do believe it was a flurry of activity because everybody got their letter at once that is in the new Area Two system. And there's been some good news results that have happened from some of the the email requests coming forward. So let's just hold off and and get a report. And if we get, continue to get a further question or comment or complaint, then direct them firstly to WSP through email and secondary secondary through our building department. And nobody who, if if someone has written to WSP that they cannot have their inspection done on a set date, and if any reason WSP came on that date, then they 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 won't be charged. They've got proof that they tried to alter the date. So I know that there's a few kinks to work out. We've had some issues. But I'm just going to wait and hold off till we get a report in September. And we'll we'll direct our questions, comments, complaints to to this. It is new. It is new a company for us, but they are not new to the to doing this program. So I think we should just hold off to that until September. So if there's any further questions on the building permit activity report, I don't think so. At at one point, Carl, I'm wondering, is a, do we see what the average perm? Or can we just do math? What's the average permit? Do you see the permits on a full dwelling slowly increasing over time? Is it due to cost materials or or larger dwellings being built?
So one thing I'm really noticing this year is we used to have, like, historically, we'd have, you know, maybe two or three grand builds for these cottages. This year, almost every second one is a grand build. There's so many big builds going on right now. That's what's really pushing up the construction value right now. It adds to the complexity because it's not our local designers are doing this. It's architects and engineers submitting plans. The plans at the end of the day are like, you know, maybe fifty pages compared to ages from one of our local designers. So it adds to the complexity, both doing plan review and inspections. But, I mean, they bring in big permit fees as well. Like, we're taking in permit fees, well, just I issued two today that were over six thousand dollars or based on seventy cents a square foot. So you can imagine what that
That is, it just the the changing landscape of what, like, you just referred to the size that people are building, the complexity of what they're building, perhaps the price of building materials adding up to do, you know, it's very popular to do a wall of glass. That is, that is extremely expensive, looks gorgeous. But so anyway, well, it is good news. Good news for DICER. Like I say, that does translate eventually to assessment dollars. And we're glad that people are investing here and and thank you to your staff, some new staff. And like you say, you're up to a full complement, but still new to the area. So you're going to have a really busy fall and then and then the push will come. I hate to say it, in the middle of August, to to get it all done before the snow starts to fly. So mover, seconder for this report, please. Counselor Clark and Councilor McKechnie? And we look forward to a report for the septic inspection program, perhaps in the at the committee in in September. We resolved that the committee of the whole received the June, July building permit activity report as information. All in favor? Okay, that's carried. And lastly, is the bylaw report for both June and July?
Well, everything's this for, yes, Madam Mayor, through you, it's, again, just to repeat, June and July. As you can see, pretty standard, we are seeing some upper, some races and complaints to people being up here. Pretty standard with our numbers going up. If there's any questions, I can try and answer them for you.
Councilor Smith, go ahead.
Thank you. Rob, and maybe it's it's the combination, but I was struck by the the receipt of seventeen new complaints in a zoning area. What what's driving all those?
Trailers. A lot of them are trailers, trailer complaints. Most of, I'd say about eighty percent of those complaints are trailers. And probably about the other twenty are structures inside the shoreline, inside the water setbacks. So those are what the the main complaints have been over the last two months. You are right, they are the joint. So it's seventeen with split between June and July. But a lot of them, most of those complaints are trailer-based complaints. People bringing their trailers up on their vacant lands that they have not purchased any building building permits for to start their that process. And they're just camping and and using the property for their trailers.
Okay, so maybe, you know, you could use this forum as an opportunity to educate public. Because I think the reason your dingos complaint is that it's illegal in DICER to have a trailer or living on on your property. Is that correct?
Correct. We can, you can store once you have a a permanent dwelling established on the property. But you cannot use the the trailers on the property, can't camp on the property. A an established use has to be established on the on the property. I can definitely go through Facebook and in our Instagram social media platforms and and definitely put some stuff out there and even on our website just to help educate the the public as we're we're seeing more and more of these complaints on on the trailers being used on properties.
Okay, and what happens after you receive a complaint?
So I'll gather all the the information and then and I'll just set up, I'll create a file and get the property owner's information and and I'll make a trip up to the site. And I'll take and and I'll speak with them if they're home. I will speak with them. If they're not home, then I I leave a business card usually. Within the next week, somebody will return to their property and see and make contact with me. And I just have a conversation. I like them on, I educate them on the bylaw, give them the specific sections and where it mentions trailers and what uses we have for trailers and and how they're not defined and or defined and.
But I think Councilor Smith is probably getting it. And then what, worst case scenario, what's the heavy hand of your bylaw? But I think Counselor Smith is probably getting it. And then what, uh, worst case scenario, what's the heavy hand of the, your bylaw?
If voluntary compliance is not achieved, uh, which is our ultimate goal, it, it would be, it would be court action.
It, it's interesting. I've noticed I always, uh, enjoy looking at the Realtor, uh, listings. And, um, all listings, doesn't matter which Realtor, uh, they are, um, when there's land for sale, they have a disclaimer on there. Uh, doesn't matter what municipality, because I believe this is a, this bylaw is the same for across, uh, our area and probably beyond, that, uh, you cannot park a trailer on this property without a building permit. So I, I have seen that in all the listings, so people know they're just trying to get away with it. And, uh, we want people to live in, uh, dwellings, not in trailers. They can, there's trailer parks for that. So, uh, keep us posted on, on compliance if you will. So if I could maybe then get a mover, secunder for this report. And I see Counsel McKecke and Counsel Smith. It resolved that the committee of the whole acknowledges receipt of the June and July bylaw update report. All in favor? Okay, and that's carried. Thank you very much, gentlemen, for, uh, for that. And, um, your department's busy, I, I see, we see that. Thank you. So next we're gonna move into planning and, uh, we'll bring forward planning staff. And we'll just wait till they come into the meeting. Oh, just Jeff today. Okay, not Chris. Wait till I see Jeff. I really look forward to in-person meetings, by the way. I, uh, sitting here staring at a screen about, I don't know, twenty feet away. So hopefully soon, hopefully we'll be able to do that soon. Hi, Jeff, how are you?
Doing well, thank you, and good morning, everybody.
Good morning. So the first is the, uh, GIS mapping of updated water courses, and that's something we had asked for, so I'll let you speak to that.
Yeah, this is a bit of a good news story, um, as per the report and is directed by council. Danielle has been working closely with the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry Provincial Mapping Unit to have the water course layer updated. For now, mostly in the area surrounded, surrounding the village of Halberton. Um, accuracy of these features is very important as it impacts, um, the development rights of these properties. Um, as you can see by the two maps provided that Danielle created, um, there has been significant changes, including the area of Halvium Crescent, where there's been some recent questions about that accuracy. In addition, the provincial mapping unit has advised that they plan to update, uh, the entire layer for water bodies, which I believe is both water courses and, uh, and, uh, polygon features such as lakes, um, within the next three to five years. So it's a bit of a good news story. Um, do you have any questions with regards to this report?
Yeah, I thought it was a good news story because we did make, uh, decisions on three properties in that neighborhood. And, um, obviously sort of did the right thing there. Uh, any questions, comments? Thanks to Danielle for this. Okay, so mover, secunder to receive this report, please. Counsel Clark, seconded by Counsel Wood Roberts. It resolved that the committee of the whole received the report pertaining to the GIS water course updates dated August tenth, twenty twenty-one. All in favor? Okay, and that's carried. And next we have, um, the, a letter of intent between Dicert and Places for People.
Yes, thank you. Um, and again, as for the staff report, at the council meeting in March, council passed a bylaw to authorize the execution of a letter of intent with places of, uh, for people um, in order to facilitate an affordable housing development located on the municipality-owned property on Walling's Road. Staff along with a couple of counselors continue to work with Places for People to move this project forward. Um, recently, after reviewing a draft site plan, additional roles and responsibilities require clarification before this can proceed. Uh, Places for People have, uh, submitted an updated letter of intent that outlines these roles and responsibility. And it's attached to the report for council consideration. Uh, given that there are budget implications for various departments, uh, included in that, uh, letter of intent, council approval is required. Prior to the approval of the letter of intent, staff recommend that it be forwarded to the municipal solicitor for review, um, just to ensure that the municipality's interests are being protected. Once staff have received a legal opinion, i- if that's the direction council, uh, directs, um, staff will bring back a detailed report for council review. Um, at that time, staff will also include a table that clarifies the departments responsible with each item, as well as the quotes, uh, or quotes for costs associated with each item. And the intent here is to kind of give council an idea of what they're agreeing to with it, with that letter of intent. As per the report, uh, staff question, um, one item, uh, with regards to the October thirty-first deadline to rezone the subject lands. Staff question whether it's necessary, uh, and achievable. Um, the timeline associated with the zoning process depends on many factors which are out of step, outside of staff's control. For instance, uh, an application may require numerous public meetings to satisfy public concerns. Um, if I recall correctly, uh, the development across the road from the subject land, which was the Walling's Way condominium, required three public meetings, which takes three months. Um, the intent is certainly not to delay the process. Um, staff continue to process the application. Um, and have already begun formulating, uh, the basis of the planning report. Uh, and really the file will be ready to proceed once this letter of intent is completed and we have a final site plan. So what I'm saying is the October thirty-first deadline may still be achievable. I just have concerns that it may not be achievable. Therefore, I, uh, I question whether it should be in there. Um, and, uh, recommend that that deadline be revised or, or removed entirely. Staff will still work as quickly as possible on it. We're not here trying to hold it up. I just, if we can't meet something, I'm reluctant to agree to it.
Uh, okay, Counsel Clark, you, you can go first, yeah.
Yeah, uh, thanks, Jeff. Um, I, I guess my concern is, is, um, uh, communicating with Places for People. If we can't meet the October thirty-first deadline or, or, or agreed upon date, is that gonna be an issue for them? And, and, you know, have they got some flexibility? Um, that, that, that would be my main concern. This is an important project for our community. Um, but, and, and I know, you know, every, we'll do everything we can to try and, and, and meet that particular deadline. If we do end up having to require, we require a couple more, a little more time, is that gonna be an issue for them? Just to get a minute, so.
I think part of the, oh, sorry, Jeff, go ahead.
No, you, you go ahead.
Well, I'll just say part, part of the problem is to say that it is resowned by October thirty-first. We may have only had our first meeting, uh, public meeting at the, uh, you know, uh, if our, if the council, uh, council solicitor can get back to council i- i- as, as quickly as he can, which we're going to ask our solicitor to put this, uh, to the top of his inbox and make this a priority. But the resounding process may only have just gotten started. We have to do this, uh, Dicert is still going to be the applicant on the rezoning. We are rezoning the property that we currently own. But, uh, in order to do the rezoning, and Jeff and I were talking about this, and we will be communicating this with Places for People within the next day or two. That in re, in zoning, you have to, you may not have to have, uh, full sketches of everything, but you do have to get your, all the setbacks, and we do have to make sure the height is in there. And then when we go and all of those different things, uh, we already have a lot of them in there, you can see from the sketch, but not with, uh, defined numbers. We do not want to rezone something and then they go to put the buildings on the site and then minor variances are needed. The Dicert is still the applicant with, with, uh, for the rezoning, but Places for People will be taking the lead at any public meetings. Uh, and they're, they just, they want this to go as quickly as possible. They're excited and so do we. But once it hits the public planning stage and any member of the public can comment, I can attest to being the chairperson for several applications, um, in my previous term of council, where it took three meetings to properly hear and address all the concerns from the public. So, uh, so the thought today is that this goes out to our solicitor, as I said, with ASAP response back. Uh, Jeff and myself and, uh, Counsel Clark can, um, uh, touch base with Places for People to keep this going as quickly as possible. And, um, we will let them know what, what we require from them. And, and, yeah, this is, this is important for, for, uh, for them. Uh, but nothing is going to expire on October thirty-first. The intent is already there, they hold us to that. Nothing is going, it's not like, uh, Cinderella in the, it's gonna just end. Um, so the intent is to, to continue on, but the actual final completion of rezoning is more likely a few months past that. I would suspect. So at this point, what we, the, uh, resolution does say, um, that the committee is recommending that the letter of intent be forwarded to the municipal solicitor for review and comments. And, uh, for all our due diligence, I think that's something that we must do. Uh, Counsel Smith?
Yeah, I'm, uh, uh, completely supportive of getting some input from our solicitor, uh, though I, um, you know, I think council needs to be, uh, uh, considering the, all of the implications of this. Um, you know, the, uh, the latest draft of the letter of intent, uh, calls out pretty clearly that, uh, uh, Places for People is not only expecting Dicert to gift them the property, um, but, uh, you know, they're looking for us to incur expenses associated with surveys and rezoning. But furthermore, uh, they and the Corthe Lakes, uh, uh, housing folks are, uh, uh, are gonna be looking for us to, uh, to waive various, uh, fees and permits and, uh, and such. Uh, we saw a small sample of that two weeks ago when council approved, uh, a subsidy of, uh, over sixty-one thousand dollars to a developer for its all number of units. Uh, um, the, uh, the cost to property taxpayers here is, is, uh, not only gonna, based on the, on the draft, not only be the, uh, the gift of property, which is of substantial value, uh, but, um, you know, the, uh, the waiver of, of fees and other expenses is also gonna measure in hundreds of thousands of dollars. And, um, um, you know, and, and although we'd all say, you know, the creation of affordable housing is, uh, is important, I think we're gonna have to have a, uh, a serious discussion as to how much of our taxpayers' money are we gonna put into this? Because, uh, hey, Places for People, uh, like anybody who's behind a cause, they see it as, um, you know, as, as totally worthwhile and there's no limit for what they're gonna ask of us. And, uh, but our responsibility is gonna have to be to draw a line somewhere and say, well, no, we gave you the property. Um, you know, maybe we're not gonna waive fees on top of that. Uh, because again, uh, that sixty-one thousand dollars two weeks ago, that was unbudgeted. We don't know where that money's gonna come from, except it's gonna come from our taxpayers. And, um, you know, it's gonna be the same thing with this situation here. In this case, it's gonna measure hundreds of thousands of dollars in value that we're putting into this. And, uh, um, not everyone's gonna agree with that.
Yes, and, and I understand, and I, that's where I think, uh, some more conversation with Places for People. And just for clarification, it was just over fifty thousand of Dicert. I believe the other additional funds were from the county, which was passed the day after our council meeting. And so, um, Tamara, uh, and the CAOs are working with City of Corthe Lakes to draft, Walt, I do recognize, I'll just finish this point, to draft policies. And, um, the policy, the, the, uh, portion of the, um, equivalent residential unit, the capital connection to the sewer fee, uh, will be one that is negotiated on a case-by-case basis. Um, I've also talked to, um, uh, Jody Curry from Places for People, and we do intend to have this land, uh, valued, not necessarily with a full proper appraisal, but with a, um, could be a, a, a letter of opinion from a Realtor that, uh, we agree upon and to have it valued in terms of that's also a considerable book, excuse me, considerable contribution. Uh, we are, they are purchasing it for the two-dollar purchase. And, uh, so we will be getting a value on that. So the ERU is not a, it's, that's not a given. That, uh, will likely be, uh, like I said, something that's negotiated on a case-by-case. And if we're doing this upfront, we may not do that down the line. And council will definitely have their, their say in that. There'll be policies around that. But they'll be, uh, still based on decisions. Uh, council's not bound, uh, to waive the ERUs in the future whatsoever. So I did see Counsel McKecke, I, uh, turn to you then next.
Yeah, I just want, the point made very clearly that, um, I don't want any negative tone on any of this, uh, uh, housing development, the, the different projects we got going on in town. This is so great that these people are coming here wanting to do this. It's always a process, it takes time. Uh, municipalities councils have to give a bit, which we're doing, but we're doing it for the best interest of our community. It's a need. I don't wanna hear, I don't, I know I can't stop it, but I don't wanna hear any more negative tone. This, this is a positive. This is a real positive for our community.
It, it is positive, Counsel McKecke, but I do think, uh, at the same time, and I, I have the same, uh, feeling is that when you enter into an agreement with anybody, and especially when we're talking about public land, where we represent the public and we're making this very large contribution because, because our land here is so limited. Um, but that there should be, uh, everybody needs to go into it eyes wide open so that there are no misunderstandings and that there are no, uh, confusion. And, and I think just the land itself, and there will be some costs of which we have to ascertain. Uh, we've had very rough ballpark estimates, but to close off and turn that road into a, uh, essentially a dead end with a cul-de-sac um, and some other costs, we'll be incurring real costs doing that. So we will get into that at this point. For now, let's get it to our solicitor. Uh, we'll continue the talks with Places for People. We wanna get this out to the public as soon as possible. I know Places for People would like to do not only what we call the capital, I call the capital P, public meeting, the statutory, uh, public meetings, they would like to do information sessions, which is, uh, very advisable with neighbors and, um, and surrounding area. And they wanna get out and do that as quickly as possible. So, uh, for now, the resolution does send it to our solicitor and, uh, we'll say, uh,
That's what I was saying, it's a process.
It's a process, exactly.
We're not just giving them, here's the keys, do what you want, here's, here's everything. But the, these place, these places, uh, that we're gonna be building are a need. And also, these people that are building them, there's a lot of communities, oh, open up their arms to them. And now they've come to us, we're, we're in a need for it. Let's open our arms up. And I think we are, thank you.
Yeah, and I, and I think that was the, the original, uh, resolution, which was unanimous back in March. And so, like you said, uh, Counsel McKecke, it is a process. So, um, just to be clear, make sure I've, I've got the resolution in here. And it was under the recommendation, that is the resolution that's in your package. So I will look for a mover and a secunder for this. Counsel Clark, Counsel Wood Roberts. Be it resolved that the herein report dated August tenth, twenty twenty-one, pertaining to a letter of intent between the municipality of Dicert et al. and Places for People for an affordable housing development on the lands of the municipality of Dicert et al. in Part Lot fourteen, Concession eight, in the geographic township of Dicert is received. And further, that the committee recommends the letter of intent be forwarded to the municipal solicitor for review and comments to ensure that the municipality's interests are protected. All in favor? Okay, and that's carried. Thank you very much, and we will be in touch with, uh, Places for People. Um, and lastly, in planning, we have a draft amendment to Policy thirty-two. So, Jeff?
Yes, thank you. Um, as counselors are likely aware, unapproved structures such as docks located on municipality-owned road allowances become an increasingly contentious matter within the county. Um, some of the other lower-tier jurisdictions within the county are, are currently addressing this matter and reviewing their policies. Um, and I have been in contact wi- with them during this process. Having said that, in my opinion, I think Dicert's policy is, is decent. Um, it outlines what people are permitted to do on our road allowances. Um, so for this update, I focus solely on council's direction from the June committee of the whole meeting. And the only changes being proposed today relate to the inclusion of, uh, a public, uh, notification process where public water access rights are being impacted. Um, attached to the report is a draft policy containing, uh, the proposed amendments, uh, which are highlighted in yellow for, for council review and discussion. Um, section two E of the policy states that council will not generally permit docks on unopened road allowances which lead to water. Um, and although, so although council directed staff to update this section of the policy to include public consultation, staff are reluctant to do so, given that the policy states the encroachments on the road allowances are not permitted. Um, it, it's a bit of a conflicting information there. Um, so I haven't proposed any update to that section. Uh, section two F has been updated as requested to incorporate the public notification. Uh section two F has been updated as requested to incorporate the public notification requirements. Um this is the section of the policy that recognizes uh historic docks that have been in that location under the same ownership since July nineteen seventy seven. Staff are proposing a an additional amendment uh to section two B um of the policy to include public consultation requirements. Section two B permits use of shore road allowances, which are but a publicly maintained highway by owners of lots that are located directly across the road. So in this section, although docks are permitted by the policy, subject to a license of occupation agreement, staffer of the opinion that public water access rights may be impacted and that um public consultation um should be required. The proposed public notification process will be conducted by the municipality, however, at the applicant's expense um and includes the following requirements. Um notice will be circulated to various internal departments. Uh notice will be circulated by regular mail to every owner of land within two hundred and fifty meters of the area to which the encroachment applies. Uh the no- notice will be posted uh on the municipal website. And lastly, the notice will be posted in a location at, on the site, in a location clearly visible and legible from the road at an area to which the encroachment implies, uh and if that's not possible, um or if it's impractical, at a nearby location as chosen by staff. Um there's obviously some costs associated with doing uh the public notification. Um costs associated with that, uh this process include postage, mileage and staff time. Uh staff ran a few test scenarios to help determine potential costs, um and it provides some data in the report. Um staff, based on that data, staff are proposing a public notification fee of a hundred and fifty dollars. Uh lastly, staff have received comments from councillor Clark, uh which were attached to the report. Um and through you, Madam Mayor, um I'm not sure, would councillor Clark like to outline his comments for the committee today or I'm not sure how we wanna proceed here. I can summarize them if he likes.
Uh I I I don't know. This is a bit um unusual to to have a councillor's report included in with the staff report. So um I I guess I'll turn it to councillor uh Clark if he wants to speak to his.
Yeah, um I I I think my points are pretty much laid out in 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 the report, but the only other thing I wanted to to uh uh suggest um and and uh as part of what Jeff has suggested. Under two F, I I would like to see something with regard to uh community consultation or 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 inquiry. And the reason for that is we do not have a clear definition as to what an encroachment is. Um and we don't have a clear definition of of what the um a shared access is and what this ends up doing then is causing a lot of contention on on uh on these particular ways. So with lack of, with lack of definition, I think is is a basis for a lot of the the conflict that we're running into. Um but anyways, my, I'm pretty sure my report is 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 pretty complete in in terms of of uh uh what I think is important to be, to be addressed in the policy thirty two. Thank you.
Okay, I think we know what an encroachment is, though. Yeah.
Uh not necess- no, no, we don't. Um what we're seeing, it it the 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 an encroachment an encroachment is different based on different pieces of property. And and a lot of cases, you'll see an encroachment might be two or three feet of a shed on going on to a municipal railway. Um the situations we've seen where there's defined the size of the dock, but they don't define all the structure on the on the shoreline and and boats and everything attached and attaching that also impact the uh the overall use of the property and and therefore the uh uh access. So it's important that we have some kind of definition, because that is not, it is not clear right now. That is, and that's causing a lot of
Okay, I I think, well, I I disagree. I think I know what an encroachment is and let Jeff speak to that.
Well, I just wanted to clarify, uh the encroachment is a defined term in the municipality's encroachment bylaws. So I don't have that in front of me right today, but it it is a defined term. So um perhaps we could add reference to the encroachment bylaw somewhere in this, in this policy.
Um any other further comment on the revised policy thirty two? Uh councillor Smith.
Thank you. Um so I thought I understood this pretty well. Um and was part of the changes. This discussion about encroachment, though, is uh is puzzling. Uh because this policy is, as I understood, it relates to public lands. Um you know, uh nobody should be building something on public lands, uh whether it's a shed, it's a dock or or whatever. Uh because they're public lands. And um and so uh if somebody has done that, then that that's illegal and that needs to be removed. Um am I missing something? Is it? You know?
Well, right, I'm sorry, Jeff.
Are there encroachments that we would actually permit?
Well, they're already happening. And in uh bullet point two of the uh item F says the user must clearly demonstrate that the use has existed uninterrupted. So we are considering, no one is supposed to further encroach as of today. But we have to acknowledge that there are things that are out there that have historic uh use. And so those are, I believe, what we are trying to capture. Jeff?
Yeah, I understand there may be the odd situation, not very many, where people can actually go back with a single owner back to the, you know, more than forty years uh and and provide proof of that, to get people who are making claims, but uh um you know, the legitimate ones are uh are frankly two and far between.
I'll let Jeff finish. He was
Yeah, I'm not aware of many. Um there are a few that exist and um they've been re- uh been to council recently, so I know we're all aware of it. What I wanna do is clarify in that first paragraph of section two F, it just, it says that council may recognize the historic use of a road allowance that leads to water for a private dock only. So i- it doesn't say that if they've had uh an illegal building or anything else there, that that can be recognized. Um obviously, uh the policy says that everything is at council's sole discretion. So council can make a decision based on the information provided to them and and as well as the the comments received uh from the public.
As Jeff noted at the very beginning, I know that uh other municipalities are looking uh at uh also where people have docks on the opposite side, on the shore road allowance, the opposite side of the road. Uh well, we just referenced Green Lake Road earlier, areas like that where people have places. I don't wanna single anyone out, but we know that it happens, and it happens not just in Dyser, it happens all over. And uh um so we, but we need to we live in a more litigious world, and we have to make sure that we have ourselves covered when we see something that is uh on our property, even if it's been there for a while, we we may wanna go down that path, even though it's a lot of work, but uh you know, to recognize that those those docks are are there, were there, but at least have some kind of liability insurance and agreements with with those owners. So um today, we're though, we're just talking this policy thirty two and to uh include the public notification requirements and the fee that would go with that. So is there support to add the public notification, the fee that goes with that? Just on the the math, so to speak, with the department, and a hundred and fifty dollars seems to be uh a fee, cost recovery, councillor?
Madam Mayor, I've I've also suggested that we add the community consultation piece. I'd like to see that in
Oh, and so what does that mean?
What it what it what it what it means is is that there's gotta be some agreement among the people who are stakeholders who got an interest in the property. So we're not saying that the uh that let's say an existing structure, you know, is is gonna go away, but there has to be some discussion with the other people who who would also have use of that property, other other users. And that's not there right now. So I think we need to
Okay, so what, what is there is a hundred and fifty meter radius? And and you're you're, I'm sorry, I I'm not following you councillor Clark.
Yeah, the notification isn't, isn't the issue. The notification's good. All I'm saying is to to support the notification. You know, you can have the notification and not bother listening to anybody. All I'm saying is we've also got a responsibility to put the notification out and then at least have uh a meeting or something so that we can hear what the interests are of the different, different users. That's
Okay, that's
That's what's missing.
All right, and uh Jeff, is there, is that captured in there, or does that need to be altered in the language?
I can take a look at the language. Uh that's the intent anyways, is that we do the public notification and then any comments received will be brought to council at the time um uh that the the agreement's brought to council for consideration, so that council can consider any additional uh conditions that may need to be imposed. Uh anything like that, based on those public comments received. That's certainly the intent, is to bring those to council.
And that's what I thought as well, and that's why councillor Clark, I didn't, wasn't following you, but that's okay. Could we add a bullet to that section then and said, and comments will be received by like you've got all the different ways where it'd be circulated, uh notice on the website, posted notice on the location. Can we add one more?
It's, excuse me, Madam Mayor, it right now, it already says, council will consider the merits of the specific request, including a review of the site conditions and the neighborhood and all public comments received through the public notification process.
Okay, and where is that? Sorry, because I'm trying to chair and
Well, that's uh, that's in uh, you know, uh section two F or whatever it is, it's highlighted in yellow.
I was looking at two D.
It's in the following bullet after the public notification process and
Very good.
Councillor Smith, I did update the policy to include that requirement.
Okay, so to satisfy
Right there in two F, highlighted in yellow.
Thank you. So councillor Clark, it is there. So thank you councillor Smith for uh, I'm scrolling and reading and cheering and, but that's why we work together. Very good. Mover, seconder then, I believe, for this uh change. Good councillor Smith. Second by councillor McKechnie. Be it resolved that the report dated August tenth, twenty twenty one, pertaining to a draft policy thirty two, a policy to govern the use of unopened municipal road allowances be received. And further, that the committee of the whole recommends that council approve policy number thirty two to incorporate the changes as written to include the addition of public notification requirements. And further, that the committee recommended the planning tariff and fee bylaw be updated to include a one hundred and fifty dollar fee for public notification requirements required by policy number thirty two. All in favor? And that carries. Thanks very much. Okay, that concludes planning. Thank you, Jeff. So we only have uh one section left with this finance, so we're not gonna take a lunch break. If that suits, I should ask, does anyone need a lunch break? It's twelve o'clock. No, sorry. Even though my tummy's rumbling a bit, I think I can hold off and we'll finish uh the last section, which is finance, and we'll bring Barbara, who's already on. So sure, microphone's off. Revenue and expenditure report, Barbara.
Uh yes, good morning. So we have here the uh revenue and expenditure report at June thirtieth representing the first six months of the year. Uh to date, uh we're pretty much on target with budget. There's still a lot of major projects that uh need to be completed. We heard earlier on the progress of the uh roads construction in the transportation area. So numbers do look relatively low compared to budget, but uh we will uh see the uh vendor uh invoice that will uh bring the budget, the actual number into line with budget. Uh same sort of concept under the environment. Uh there's still quite a bit of the budget to absorb. And again, we heard today with our landfills, a lot of the activity is gonna come a little bit later in the year. And uh with that come the vendor invoices to bring it into line of uh budget. So that uh concludes the report.
Okay, thank you, Barbara. And um I said hello to our new staff member here this morning, our procurement and grants coordinator. And I'm wondering, um as uh as she gets into her new role, et cetera, uh we've talked about this particularly in Public Works, where we do have large dollar uh figures, whether they be on on trucks or on um uh capital projects. Um is there that column that it's pending? So we know what's coming down the pipe. Uh we see that in our own sort of credit card statement. Sometimes you know that it's not posted yet, but it's pending, so that it's actually plugged into the system. Is there a way to do that so revenue and expenditure reports would be uh slightly more accurate? You, right now, we have to wait till the invoice is paid until you get the expenditure, but will we have that pending column?
Yes, so once we start initiating the uh purchase order system, um basically what uh I understand, it's more along the line of encumbrance accounting. Uh basically there, we can take a look at our purchase orders, our outstanding purchase orders and uh build into the report uh what has been committed to date.
I mean, that's going to be very helpful for particularly when we uh always end in December and we sit there and have to call people to send the actual invoice. If we know that the project's out there, we're just waiting to, we haven't paid it, but particularly at year end, it's gonna be helpful, but as we go forward. So any questions on revenue expenditure report? Oh, sorry, Barbara, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, that's one of the benefits of utilizing the uh purchase order uh module within the financial accounting software is to allow us to track and make sure any outstanding invoices uh have been uh, we can reach out to the vendor and uh follow up to make sure that we receive those in due time.
Great. Um a motion to receive the revenue expenditure report, please. Councillor Clark and councillor Wood Roberts. Be it resolved that the committee of the whole acknowledges receipt of the revenue and expenditure report at June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. All in favor? Okay, that's Carrie. Um Barbara, just a question as we're going through finance, uh maybe we did, maybe I should ask this privately, but now I've opened my mouth. Have we had a report on the safe restart and other uh monies received to date and what's left? Um I know last year, we were very concerned with expenses that COVID was costing our municipality. And so we sort of did a six month uh review, if you will, um and we've had other monies coming in, but did we do that in the spring?
Uh yes, there was a report presented uh earlier in the spring. I believe it was uh um perhaps around the timeframe of the budget. Um I'd have to go back and look on that there, but there was a report presented.
Okay, that's what I'm thinking. So maybe sometime in the fall or as we uh head into our twenty twenty two budget season, we can, we can sort of see where we're at with those extra funds that we've received, modernization and safe start. So ne- next is the check summary.
Yes, so uh yeah, June was a big month, uh total disbursements of just over four point six million. Of that, uh we had our second quarter transfer payments to the county and school boards. And those payments there represented just over three point four million dollars.
Any questions on the check summary? If not, mover, seconder, please. Councillor Clark, councillor McKechnie. Be it resolved that the committee of the whole acknowledges receipt of the June and July check summary. All in favor? Okay, Carrie. Uh tax adjustments.
Yes, so uh section three fifty seven, we have three properties here. Uh demolition uh is the reason for the uh write-off, and the total municipal portion of the write-off is one thousand five hundred and seventy eight dollars.
Okay, any questions on that? Pretty straightforward. We get these every month, pretty much. Uh mover and a seconder then. Councillor Clark, councillor Smith. Be it resolved that the committee of the whole recommends that council authorize tax adjustments for applications made under section three fifty seven of the municipal act two thousand and one as amended as follows, and the eight dollars are there. Uh all in favor? And it's carried. The monthly sewage report.
Yes, so uh looking at uh year to date, June, if you annualize that and compare it to last year, we're behind by about seven percent. Uh hopefully, we can make some of that up uh in uh July and August uh with uh the extra tourist traffic in the area and uh any sort of programming there is at the uh high school.
I did notice the numbers were lower. I don't know, was read those in depth, uh you know, because they're fairly standard month to month, but then you take a look and you wonder um that things are down. And I also wonder is when those, is is the meter read uh manually, and is it read uh for instance, some hydro said it could be on the twenty seventh of June, uh but it's not to June thirtieth. Like, is it uh
Yeah, so
Could there be some fluctuation there?
So uh the program is the uh meter gets read on or around the twenty fifth of the month. And it's each month that um we reach out to the uh various user um facilities here. Uh twice a year, we um facilities here. Uh, twice a year, we do have our municipal law enforcement officer actually go make a site visit to confirm uh the reasonableness of the uh meter readings.
Okay. So we'll see, hopefully, schools back in and and different things by going. Uh, councillor Smith, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I wonder, uh, you know, we've been uh dealing with this uh declining volumes, uh even pre-COVID. Um, and um, you know, we had the uh the report uh regarding asset management that identified the uh um, you know, the shortfall, if you like, terms of uh um, you know, our our sewage system and the and the need for a uh I'll call it a rating increase, if you like. Um, and and I'm wondering if rather than waiting until the budget time, um, you know, should we be more proactive and uh and uh and ask Barbara to bear a report and come back with some options? Longer we wait, the you know, the increase is just going to get bigger. Um, and um, and so uh should we get at that and uh and get some uh, you know, details on the table and uh uh, you know, be in a position to uh, you know, to deal with it sooner than later.
Yeah, that that's a good question, councillor Smith. We did talk about that in our asset in um uh the uh service delivery review of this this fluctuation because it's metered. On the one hand, though, when it's a big, say, an apartment building and the entire apartment building switches to a low-flow toilet and their meters rates go down, we should be happy about that, which that that's a good positive move. Um, I know one thing we do need is more users on the system. And hopefully that will be happening in the next little while. And, you know, we can sort of see like why it did did some go down and why didn't they, but also if there's a ability to uh weather those fluctuations in in sewer fees. Barbara, did you want to comment on that at the number?
Yeah, well, I I think the request is a somewhat of a larger project that has uh different areas involved with it, so um, I would prefer to defer uh, you know, to reach out to public works and and um, you know, obviously do consider the asset management plan. Um, I do agree that uh, you know, we need to get more users on the system, whether you have the system or not, there's a fixed cost component there, and the more users you have, then you generate more revenue and then your cost per user goes down. So um, just looking at uh some of the proceedings with the municipality, it looks like we have projects on the table where there will be more users forthcoming. So it's um, you know, looking at your costs, where do you want to go with the uh the sewer system? Uh, there's a lot of questions out there, and I think it is a bigger project than just crunching numbers at this point.
I think I think you may be right. Uh, so for now, uh, we'll just keep it in the back of our minds before we sort of request staff to do too too much digging at this point, but uh and I think we'll see some of these, uh, certainly the schools up and and whatnot up uh as as September comes around and people are back in class. So for now, if we could receive the um this monthly report, though. Uh, councillor McKechnie and councillor Clark. We are resolved that the committee, the whole acknowledges receipt of the monthly metered sewage readings report for the period ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. All in favor? Okay, that's carried. And uh, the tax sale uh report, and thank you for uh for reporting on this. And a special thank you to Rachel for uh all her hard work in this. To have a meeting with um, what was it, a hundred and sixty-four registered attendees? That is, that's a quite a something to to manage. So thank you to all IT people that were involved in this.
Yes, so uh it um, this is kind of uh a very unusual situation considering the uh the um whole COVID uh recalibrating. So um, we did conduct our tax sale uh for twenty twenty-one uh through a Zoom meeting on July the eighth. Uh, we had one hundred and sixty-four registered attendees, um, which is quite impressive considering the size of our uh council chambers. I don't think we could fit that many people in in the room. Um, and so there were uh seven properties uh that were initially listed, uh two got canceled. Um, we had uh over a hundred and thirty tenders for all seven properties. Uh the um meeting is actually available for viewing uh on our website. Uh, it was recorded via YouTube. Um, it was uh, it took us about three hours to get through all those tenders. Um, so it was a little bit of a lengthy process. Uh, so um, I actually had some feedback from the one-third-party uh tax consulting firm that uh helped us uh prepare for the uh tax sale, and we got some good feedback. And uh, I also had a phone call from one of the um uh people that actually submitted a tender and commended uh staff on uh how uh how, I guess, professional uh the meeting was run, and it was very clear and concise that, you know, uh, we do have to follow uh the uh rules uh specifically under uh Ontario Regulation one eighty-one oh three, and uh that is the municipal tax sale rules. And uh, so it was overall, it was a very successful tax sale. Um, and uh, the um, the results are included on the attached schedule there. Uh, the first and second uh uh top bids were included in the analysis. Uh, and so any uh surplus proceeds outside of what is owed to the municipality does get paid into the Superior Court of Justice. And uh, the previous uh property owner can make an application into the court to uh retrieve those funds. Now, uh historically, um, you know, the municipality would have the ability to make a payment into court, but in twenty nineteen the rules changed where they could no longer do that. So, yeah, um, that concludes the report.
Okay, well, thank you on that. And too bad, just so people out there uh realize, no, Dicer did not get the proceeds. I think that's important to uh understand. Uh, however, we did recoup all our costs, so that really helps our bottom line no matter what. Uh, so that taxes are paid. That's really all taxes and 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 interest incurred are and and any expenses that were incurred to get that money back. So I believe that's the total of the sixty-two thousand dollars uh that we received, not um not that I didn't do the math, but you know, seven or eight hundred thousand dollars that was that was brought in. So so great job. Uh, your recommendation also says that uh even on a go-forward basis, this should be done electronically, and I uh look to the rest of council, I would I would support that, and I'll see if the rest of council supports that. I think there's an example, somebody could be I was going to say in Toronto, but they could be in British Columbia, they could be in Europe and participate in this if they want to do so. And uh so I I think it's very important that we do continue this particular type of uh um a tax sale, which I believe the there's already probably going to be another one. I don't know if you think later this year or or start proceedings, it would be into next year, uh there'll be another situation.
So this tax sale here was a little bit of a catch-up because we had to defer uh the one in twenty twenty, so uh definitely we're preparing for the next one. Uh, we're looking, we're hoping that we can defer any eligible properties uh until spring when some of the others come forward and uh we can just do one uh tax sale because there's there's quite a bit of preparation involved. Uh, and uh, I I would like to thank the um the staff, like uh, this was such a collaboration of staff to come together uh to uh set up the Zoom meeting, to set up the tax sale, to do the the research, our IT group at the county. Uh, there were a lot of people that participated in this process and uh uh, I I do think it was very successful and uh um, I I would think that there might be some other municipalities looking at how we conducted our tax sale and learn some that.
Yeah, so thank you very much for that. And uh, so there is a resolution to receive. And um, you know, then the good thing about that is, like you say, you have to follow a very strict uh process under an Ontario regulation, but perhaps those people who purchased land and some of them at very reduced prices, um, some got a deal, some paid market value, but they got and you know, maybe uh this year, then they'll gonna get building permits and um utilize that land better than uh uh sitting vacant for the most part. Um, so mover and a secondor to acknowledge your receipt of this report. Councillor Wood Roberts and councillor Clark. We are resolved that the committee, the whole acknowledges receipt of the twenty twenty-one tax sale by public tender results. All in favor? Okay, carried. And the only thing left is to ask if there is a notice of motion. Councillor Clark. Councillor, I'm sorry, councillor Smith. Don't know why I said councillor Clark, pardon me.
Um, yeah, thank you. Um, uh councillors have the, you know, seen an exchange of email messages and uh and I know Andrea Mueller has uh booked a meeting. I don't know if all councils are going to be there in September uh at the tennis courts. Um, but I wanted to uh to put forward a uh a notice of motion. The committee of all uh recommends uh council direct staff to work with the pickleball group to identify the preferred approach in support of implementing the shared use of the Headlake Tennis Courts beginning fall of twenty twenty-one. Um, you know, uh, obviously, one group doesn't want to share it. Uh, but I I think and and Andrea had sent out an email, uh given her some details of uh of how it's done elsewhere. And seems to me that um, um, you know, the tennis courts uh are uh made for by all property taxpayers and uh everybody should have a chance to uh to use it for uh, you know, activities. Uh uh tennis courts and and tennis and pickleball have managed to share uh facilities elsewhere. And um, you know, certainly we've got a group of all people here who would like to uh have access to that, but it's like give them a chance to get on with it.
Uh, so I'm a bit confused because I do think at the last meeting, we had a ad hoc committee, uh councillor Clark, councillor Wood Roberts and yourself to have this uh meeting together with concerned people. So the notice of motion is jumping ahead of that without the ad hoc committee group meeting. So I'll just look and see
Yeah, that's because the the ad hoc meeting uh, you know, isn't uh until September and uh that'll take uh more time and the year will slip by and you know, these folks could have been playing pickleball this year. That's uh, um, that's what they were looking to do. Um, and uh, so
The good news is
Why we can't get on with it.
Uh, well, the good news is I have heard that they have uh set times to play in the new Minden Arena coming up in uh in starting very shortly. So uh, I will just look to see if there's a secondor, if you want to repeat your motion, and then I'll look to see if there's a secondor, if there's not, it uh even if there is, we can still vote on it to take it forward. So is there? Do you want to repeat that, councillor Smith?
Okay, committee of the whole recommends council direct staff to work with the pickleball group to identify the preferred approach in support of implementing a shared use of the Headlake Tennis Courts beginning in the fall of of uh twenty twenty-one.
Is there support uh secondor for that motion? No, uh, so there isn't support so that notice of motion does uh defeated or whatever, if I'm using the right terminology, doesn't go forward. I I I and I only think probably there's no secondor because we just talked about it a couple of weeks ago and there's an ad hoc committee working. It may not be exactly what they want and get those uh it it done as quickly as you'd like, but there are there are places to play currently. So I think we just discussed last month that uh we'll let we'll let staff already deal with, well, you're a part of the group. Um, I did receive an invitation. I have to explain to Andrea Mueller, I I'm not on the committee, but I think she just copied me, so I will not be attending that. Okay, any other further notice of motion? Any other councillors? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Councillor Donaldson and seconded by councillor McKechnie. We are resolved that the committee, the whole adjourn its meeting held on August tenth, twenty twenty-one at twelve twenty P M. All in favor? Okay, and that carries. Thank you very much, everybody. Uh, enjoy the day. It is uh Tuesday in the village of Halliburton, so I'm sure the market is busy. And um wish you all a great rest of your summer, and I'll see you at the uh Dicer Council meeting on August twenty-fourth. Okay, take care. Bye-bye now.